So it's six thirty, I think, and I will call the city council meeting to order for Tuesday, March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. I apologize to everybody for starting late. This meeting will be conducted by a remote video and teleconference pursuant to one M R S A subsection four zero three A. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting ID eight five six four six three three nine three zero one and password four one eight nine six six or via computer at the link provided on the Sanford website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the city of Sanford website at W W W dot Sanford Maine dot org under email city department slash C council. I ask everybody except for Council Martel to please mute and he will have, he will say the pledge of allegiance for us and ask for the moment of silence. Council Martel.
Hey, everyone. Uh, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please pause for a moment of silence. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Jonathan. Um, I will call the roll. Council Martel.
Present.
Council Hanselman is absent with notice. Council Tuttle.
Present.
Council Stackpole.
Present.
Council Lanigan.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
And I'm Anne Marie Mastrochio and I serve as the mayor of the city of Sanford. We're joined by Steve Buck, the city manager, and Larissa Ricketts, the manager's executive assistant. The first item on the agenda of the is are the minutes for twenty-one dash one three four dash zero one, order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held on Tuesday, March second, two thousand and twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
Don't move, man.
So a motion by Council Tuttle, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Martel. Any discussion? Council Martel.
Approved, yes.
Council Hanselman, absent. Council Tuttle.
Yes.
Council Stackpole.
Yes.
Council Lanigan.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Minutes are approved. Twenty-one dash one three five dash zero one, order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, March second, two thousand and twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Council Stackpole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Tuttle. Any discussion? Council Martel.
Yes.
Council Tuttle.
Yes.
Council Stackpole.
Yes.
Council Lanigan.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Yes.
I am also a yes, that is six in favor. Communications and presentations, twenty-one dash one two one dash zero one, order to present a commendation, Public Works employee Aaron M. Downs, equipment operator four, on behalf of the city of Sanford, for his service to the Maine Army National Guard, to facilitate the peaceful transition of power in Washington, D.C. And I think I'm going to turn this to Matt Hill first, is that correct, Steve?
That's correct.
I see you, Matt. Go ahead.
Yeah, the Public Works Department would like to recognize Aaron Downs, uh, for his service, uh, to ensure a peaceful transition of power in Washington, D.C. and answering the call of the Maine National Guard, uh, to, uh, report for duty. Uh, he went down and served his country, uh, this, this year, and we want to, uh, present him this commendation for service. I believe he's on the call tonight.
Is he on video so that we can see him? Hope I'm hearing the, hope I'm hearing the, someone have their video, their. Do you think you can fix that?
Just did.
Thank you. Aaron, I see you. Um, are you going to read a letter or do you want, would you like me to read the letter that, um, came to Pete Smith from Dean Preston? Or is there somebody here that's going to present something to Aaron?
Uh, no, we've just got, you know, Aaron's already been presented the letter, but this is additional recognition on behalf of the city for his service.
Would it be appropriate for me to read the letter from Dean Preston?
Yes, please.
All right, the letter is to the Sanford Public Works, addressed to dear Peter Smith. Your employee Sergeant Aaron Downs is a vital member of the Maine Army National Guard. Inherent with membership in the Maine Army National Guard is the opportunity to answer the call of our nation and our state. Sometimes these opportunities come with a requirement for a quick response, which necessitates less warning than we would prefer. Just recently, on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, events in our nation's capital required a response from our Maine Army National Guard. Our soldiers, including your employee, responded with very short notice to D.C., which helped to ensure a safe transition of power during the presidential inauguration. Our organization consists of a team of partners. This team is made up of our citizen soldiers, their families, and their employers. We acknowledge that when a soldier serves, so does their family and their employer. Understanding and embracing this, we in the Maine Army National Guard would like to recognize you and your organization for your relentless support of your soldier and the Maine Army National Guard. You are an American patriot and we cannot accomplish our mission without your support. Sincerely, Dean A. Preston, Brigadier General, Maine Army National Guard, Land Component Commander. And I just want to say with our, our appreciation, appreciation from all of us, Aaron, thanks for serving us all so well. Do any other counselors have anything that they would like to add? Council Tuttle.
Yes, Madam Mayor, having been a member of the guard myself, uh, for a number of years, I wanted to congratulate the Sergeant for doing a job well done and, uh, I, I wish there were more folks like him. Congratulations for a job well done, Sergeant.
I appreciate that, Councilmember.
So have we embarrassed you enough?
Uh, negative, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, we're going to go on, right, see another, oh, just a thumbs up. Anybody else want to have any, to say anything? We're really proud of you, thanks, Aaron.
This is Council Martel. I just wanted to say, um, having, I have family members that have been in the guard and I understand that it is, you know, a, a sacrifice to yourself and your family and I just wanted to thank you for your service, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, and thank you for coming here this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, public participation. This is for matters that are not on the agenda. We have a lot, a large number of public hearings this evening, so, um, just want to check. Um, all right, so, are there, I don't know if there, we don't keep a list, it's harder on Zoom, but if you have, if there's a member of the public that wants to speak on something that's not on the agenda, I'm counting on you, Larissa, to help me see hands, if they're up. If I don't see your hand or Larissa doesn't and you'd like to say something, you can just speak up. I see no hands. Now, I don't know if counselors noticed, but we moved this, the, um, city manager's report and the mayor's report and, and city council's subcommittee reports to later in the agenda because we had such a large number of public hearings. So we will go on to the public hearings. The city council will take public comment on the following. Twenty-one dash eight one dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Leaf Labs LLC for a medical marijuana grower cultivator license at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit four fifty, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Oh, Colby Vazina, I see a hand up. You have video, please?
I'm sorry, I have my, I have my mic muted, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you, I can't see you.
Ah, beautiful, I don't have a, I don't have a webcam, so that's not going to happen, sorry.
Okay, is it, are you speaking on this public hearing, this item?
I had a thing before this, but I didn't, I couldn't get my thing working, so, my bad.
Well, can you wait then, because I have to finish this public hearing that I'm doing, Colby, okay? I promise.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, because you wanted to speak under public comment?
Yes.
Okay, so let me just finish this public hearing, then I'll go back and let you do your public comment and then I'll continue on with the public hearings, okay? So I am asking if there's, for this, for the item twenty-one dash eight one dash zero one, is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Hearing no comments, I will declare that public hearing closed. Okay, I will go back to you, Colby, if you have something that you'd like to talk about that's not on the agenda, please go ahead.
All right, cool, yeah, how long do you guys?
Can you just tell us who you are and where you live, please?
Um, all right, my name is Colby Vazina, I live in Sanford, and, uh, I just wanted to know how long you guys are going to be doing these Zoom meetings for, and you guys plan on doing these in person again, or is this like more of a permanent thing now?
It's not permanent, I will tell you that, but, um, I expect that we will be doing them for a while, until it's safe for everyone to meet in public.
Okay, all right.
So we are having discussions about it routinely.
Okay.
Anybody else to speak? Okay, I'm going to just continue on with the public hearings. Twenty-one dash eight two dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Afterglow Edibles for a medical marijuana manufacturer tier one license at nine Renaissance Way, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open, is there anyone to speak in favor? There anyone to speak against? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed. If I skip one, tell me. Twenty-one dash eight three dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Nicholas Wyman, doing business as G S, G S G Consulting for a medical marijuana grower cultivator license at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit three oh one, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam Mayor, this is Jamie Cole, Code Enforcement Officer.
Yes, Jamie.
How we doing tonight? Uh, I just wanted to make a comment about Unit three oh one and Unit three oh five. So Nick Wyman is the, um, licensee holder for this unit and, um, I just wanted the council aware that, uh, in recent months I have caught Nicholas Wyman in another unit, Unit three oh five, uh, occupying it without a license or without an occupancy permit. Um, I, I posted a stop work order on him, um, I then caught him again continuing to operate the other unit without an occupancy permit, without a license. Uh, since then, um, I have met, uh, onsite, so last Thursday, uh, March eleventh, I met onsite, uh, with Nick and his attorney, and, um, I did verify that Unit three oh five, um, has now been cleared, um, and next unit at three oh one is in compliance, uh, but I did feel it necessary for you guys to be made aware, um, that there was a little bit of, um, bad activity in the last year and, and thought you guys would want to, want to know that.
Thank you, Jamie.
Madam Mayor.
Council Lanigan.
Yes, uh, Jamie, a quick question for you, is there any, um, when we did the licensing of the properties, is there any stipulation in there on their license qualifications that they make sure that their renters all have valid licenses to be operating in the property?
Uh, yes, that, that is a requirement, we, um, we do hold the property owners responsible, um, to provide us with a list of current, um, tenants, and it is their responsibility to make sure that their tenants get, uh, licenses and occupancy permits. In, in this case, uh, the property owner, um, was actively trying to get the tenant to get licensed properly, um, during this process.
Okay, I just want to make sure that maybe we remind the property owner, I mean, we, we've only allow eight properties in our community that it is very important to follow the rules, because if we pull that property license, that could cost a lot of, lot of businesses their, their opportunities. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that's why we put these precautions into place is to make sure that the city was well protected against this activity, but I'm glad to see that it's been corrected and going in the right direction.
I see a hand up, the Honorable Kenneth Fredat. We're on mute.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I want to thank also, uh, Mr. Cole for the opportunity to meet with him on, uh, Thursday. Uh, we had an opportunity to go through the unit.
Can you just identify yourself, I know who you are, but can you just say who you're here representing, please?
Sorry, sorry.
And if you have video, we would appreciate it.
Um.
Know you were on earlier.
It says you cannot start your video because the host has disabled it.
Oh, okay.
So.
If I, I'll see if I can correct that.
Because you were video before, oh, there you are, you're all set. Thank you, thank you, Steve.
Uh, I, I want to, Madam Mayor, I want to just start off by saying hello to Steve as well, he's a, a family friend and I've known his family for a long time, so, uh, I'll say hello to Steve and, uh, hope I was well seen.
We had kids in daycare together, Ken.
Yeah, absolutely, they're, uh, organs now in Portland as a nurse, so they're all growing up.
Yes.
So are you here representing, um?
I, yes, uh, Madam Mayor, um, Attorney Mark Dion and I both, uh, represent Nick Wyman. Uh, and we did, uh, we did two visits with Mr. Wyman at the site, uh, Mr. Dion and I did one site visit alone and then we did the follow-up visit with Mr. Cole. I think we have a very good cleared line of communication now with Mr. Cole, um, and with our client, uh, Mr. Wyman. Uh, we've also agreed that if, at any point in time, Mr. Cole wants to do, uh, any site checks in, uh, either one of the units, he will simply contact me and we'll make sure that, uh, he can do those, uh, right away, and so, uh, we look to be fully compliant. Um, I think, uh, he's a, Mr. Wyman's a young man and I think he's got a great future ahead of him, and so we'd ask for, um, support of his application. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, there's an awful lot of honorables on this meeting tonight, I saw Mark Dion too, okay. All right, so is there any, so is there anybody else to speak in favor? Is that a hand up, Council Stackpole?
More, more of a, more of a question, may, maybe I need to, uh, to save this for later.
Well, no, because if, unless it's this particular public hearing, because these are all in the consent agenda.
Okay, so a, a question, a question for, uh, for Jamie, um, what, what happened to the, uh, so, he's go, he's growing marijuana in a, uh, neighboring unit that was not licensed, uh, essentially, uh, what, do you know what happened to that marijuana, where, where did it end up?
So he wasn't actually growing the marijuana in the other unit, he was using the other unit as a process in area four, the marijuana grown in Unit three oh one.
Okay.
So I didn't actually catch active plant in that unit.
Right.
What, what we caught was the processing of plants in that unit.
And, and so he has some kind of, uh, lease or rental for both of those units with the, with the owner?
So yes, he purchased that unit existing from a previous tenant that, that stopped his, his cultivation facility. Uh, Nick does plan on opening up a, another cultivation facility there or potentially, um, renting it or sub-renting it or, or whatever he decides, but, um, so the, the activity that we caught was the processing of there, not necessarily the growing of.
Okay, so this, I, I realize this would be a viol, a violate, a licensing violation or a code violation, whatever, but not specifically some kind of illegal activity? Like selling, uh, the marijuana that he was growing in there?
Correct, no, no illegal activity as in state law illegal, uh, just a violation of our licensing chapter and our zoning chapter.
Okay, all right.
Okay, anybody else to speak in favor? Anyone else to speak against? I'll declare.
Madam Mayor, if I could?
Okay, so, yeah, go ahead, Count.
Yeah, so the, the, the internal, uh, conversation between myself and our code officer was, was this, that, um, Mr. Wyman has had a notice of violation, Mr. Wyman has corrected that notice of violation, uh, as, as any good business owner would do, um, and that if, if the notice of violation had not been addressed or had not been corrected, there would have been a recommendation for the council to consider further action, but as the, uh, notice of violation was corrected, and we have the known intent for him to move forward with licensing the subsequent unit, uh, adjacent to his operation, therefore there was no recommendation as, as far as any, any other actions other than the approval of his license this evening.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else? Any other comments for or against? And I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash eight four dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by High Octane Farms LLC for a medical marijuana grower cultivator license at one sixty-eight Country Club Road, Unit D, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open, is there anyone to speak in favor? There anyone to speak against? I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash eight seven dash zero one, public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by C Q F K Unlimited LLC for a medical marijuana grower cultivator license at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit three oh seven, Sanford, Maine. There anyone, I'll declare the public hearing open, is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash eight nine dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Westbrook Creek for a medical marijuana grower cultivator license at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit four zero five, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open, is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash nine zero dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Five Jacks Production for a medical marijuana grower cultivator license at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit two ten, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open, is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash nine two dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Captain's Cannabis LLC for a medical marijuana grower cultivator license at one sixty-eight Country Club Road, Unit E, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing, hearing closed. Twenty-one dash nine three dash zero one, public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Prospect Hill Holistic LLC for a medical marijuana grower cultivator license at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit three oh three, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open, is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash nine six dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Grown East LLC for a medical marijuana grower cultivator license at eighty-one Industrial Way, Unit C, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash nine seven dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Canonown LLC for a medical marijuana grower cultivator license at twenty-seven Hancock Lane, Building one, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open, is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash nine eight dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against renewal application submitted by Two O Seven Hydroponics for a medical marijuana grower cultivator license at one sixty-eight Country Club Road, Unit B, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open, is there anyone to speak in favor?
I am, ma'am, uh, James Lindsay, owner of Two O Seven Hydroponics, in favor of my company.
Oh, Two O Seven, that, okay, and, go ahead.
Yes, I'm in favor of seeing my company renew their license, uh, for another year within Sanford, Maine. Um, we've done great here last year, I recently just had Jamie Cole, Code Official, come to our facility and check everything for us and say that we're good to go, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Hearing none, then I'll declare the public hearing closed, thank, thank you, Mr. Lindsay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Twenty-one dash nine eight dash zero one, oh wait, that's the one I just did, right? Okay, sorry, I was going to make you speak again. Twenty-one dash nine nine dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Pine Tree Maine LLC Adult Use for a medical marijuana grower cultivator license at twenty-two Smata Drive, Suite B, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open, is there anyone to speak in favor?
I, this is Lindsay Holden, I just noticed a typo.
In?
Um, twenty-one nine nine zero one.
Yes, what's the typo, sorry?
Um, Pine Tree Maine LLC Adult Use for a medical marijuana grower cultivator, it's for adult use marijuana growing and cultivation.
Jamie?
Uh, Lindsay is correct, it looks like Sue might have put this one in under a template, so this license would be for adult use, so it should, it should read Pine Tree Maine LLC Adult Use for a marijuana grower cultivator license at twenty-two Smata.
So that, well, that, that won't change anything in the consent agenda, correct?
It shouldn't.
Okay, so we'll just, thank you, thank you for that, Lindsay.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, any, anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? And I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash one zero 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 one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor, oh wait, is that the one I just, no, it's it. Which one did I do, I'm sorry, can you just?
It's just a different version of the same.
Okay. Okay, it's a different suite, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Pine Tree Maine LLC Tyler Holden for a medical marijuana grower cultivator license at twenty-two Smata Drive, Suite one, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open, is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Declare the public hearing closed. I apologize for the confusion, but there's a lot of them. Twenty-one dash one zero six dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Milk Lab LLP for a medical marijuana manufacturer license at eighty-one A Industrial Way, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open, is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam Mayor, this is Jamie again?
Okay, go ahead, Jamie.
Uh, so not on your wording of this specific item on this page, but, uh, this is supposed to be a tier two manufacturer and it's listed as a tier one manufacturer on the actual license, so I just want a public record that this is for a tier two marijuana manufacturing license.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Hearing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash one zero seven dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Cal and Company LLC, doing business as Wisely Cannabis for a medical marijuana grower cultivator license at eighty-one A Industrial Way, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open, is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, who's that?
Madam Mayor, this is Diane Connelly, resident of Springville. May I speak?
Yes, sure.
My comments are not, my comments are not neither for or against, it's a question in regards to signage in a parking lot with a growers', uh, logo on it, and I would like to ask if the code was aware and if that's been rectified.
Jamie, do you have anything?
Um, so our ordinances have recently been revised, um, that would allow, uh, medical marijuana cultivators to have, um, signage now. Um, so previously our assigned ordinance restricted that, our assigned ordinance now allows, um, them to have signage.
Was the signage taken down before the ordinance approved?
It was.
Thank you very much, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Um, anyone else to speak in favor or against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Okay, twenty-one dash one zero eight, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Silverleaf LLC for a medical marijuana grower cultivator license at eighty-one Industrial Way, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open, is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash one zero nine dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor A public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Nicholas Zagami for a Medical Marijuana Grower Cultivator License at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit five zero five, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash one one zero dash zero one. A public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by North Star Property Management for a Medical Marijuana Grower Cultivator License at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit two oh one, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash one 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 dash zero one. A public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by High Mart Farms for a Medical Marijuana Grower Cultivator License at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit two zero three, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash one one two dash zero one. Public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Hold Space LLC for a Medical Marijuana Grower Cultivator License at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit one fifty, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash one three seven dash zero one. A public hearing on a proposed amendment to, oh, wait, sorry, I don't have to do that one. Do I? What was that? I'm gonna do that public hearing first, and then we'll go on to the consent. I got it. Twenty-one dash one three seven dash zero one. Public hearing on a proposed amendment to City Code, Chapter one twenty, Article six, Solid Waste Fees, Amending the Price per Sleeve of Paged-You-Throw Bags from thirteen fifty per sleeve to fourteen fifty per sleeve starting July first, twenty twenty-one. Phew. Do you wanna, is somebody gonna present, Steve? And then we'll have um?
Yes, I, I will. So as requested this evening, um, I've put forward a, um, quite a lengthy synopsis of the, the whole uh, Paged-You-Throw Program uh, that gets us to why the, the City Council has a recommendation to amend the ordinance uh, as put forward this evening. I don't have a highlighted copy of this, so I'm gonna try to abbreviate this. So this tries, this, this makes the connection between the cost of the solid waste and recycling hauling contract, solid waste disposal cost, and the single sort recycling processing cost. The first slide that you see here is a synopsis of what those costs were for fiscal year twenty versus what they are now known, uh, anticipated and known to be for fiscal year twenty-one. Um, please note that there's uh, an increase of cost this year of about thirty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars. Uh, and then I will link this later in the presentation as to why uh, the City Council is, is making a, an adjusted cost to the per sleeve cost for uh, the Paged-You-Throw Bags. For the history, uh, the hauling of the uh, and when you see MSW's municipal solid waste and recyclables, there's a hauling contract uh, with the city's longtime contractor, Casella. It expires in June thirtieth of this year, twenty twenty-one. City Council uh, did a review process of that with, with that hauler and was giving three different options on price quotes on that. And the City Council has selected, has implemented a new contract uh, that will start July first of this year for a five-year extension to that. The first year cost of which will be eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars. It is an increase of thirty-five thousand nine hundred dollars year over year, or four point five two percent. Therefore, the first year increase in the hauling for, for this next uh, ensuing fiscal year is thirty-five thousand nine hundred dollars. That will be one of the added costs that, that is sought, be addressed through the sleeve price. Uh, the municipal solid waste disposal contract, that is a long-term contract that formerly was with Merck, uh, the Main Energy Recovery uh, Corporation that was bought out by Casella. That, that Merck facility used to be in Bitterford. It was a waste of energy plant. It was bought up by Casella. And pursuant to that uh, purchase, uh, the tri-county municipalities, there's fourteen surrounding communities. That was my first year of working here. Those fourteen communities entered into a negotiation process with Casella, having, as the purchaser of Merck. And to um, uh, Casella was taking over the contracts with those communities. Uh, the communities were legally represented, of course, as was Casella. And the favorable negotiation that came out of that actually produced a reduction to seventy dollars per ton for the MSW price at that point in time. Uh, there was a one-year stay on the one dollar per ton per year increase. And then the second year of the contract, the one dollar per ton per year increase uh, kicked in. Uh, so that brings us forward to this point in time for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. The average price will be seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents. It's on a calendar year, so we cross over uh, in the fiscal year from two. But the average price for that, for that, for our fiscal year is seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents per ton. That has a net increase for year over year of four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. So we, we dispose of four thousand one hundred and sixty tons of MSW coming from the residential curbside collection program. The next cost that needed to be accounted for in this year is the recycling contract. And this has been the most impactful piece, this whole equation. Uh, so up until two thousand and eighteen, the city had one of the most favorable contracts out there with EcoMaine that accepted our single sort recycling at zero dollars per ton. Uh, so when the city went into uh, the original development of the Paged-You-Throw Program, uh, it was, it was based entirely on this two thousand and eighteen, uh, well, this, this zero dollar per ton tipping contract, uh, which uh, encouraged us to get as much into the single sort recycling stream as was allowed pursuant to their uh, waste disposal contract with us and avoid as mu- many tons as possible in the municipal solid waste side of the equation. The Paged-You-Throw Trash Bags are actually trash metering bags. So it's a trash metering program that establishes a fee uh, for use. So in the two thousand, in, in the uh, analysis uh, back in two thousand and twelve, when the Paged-You-Throw Program was brought back in to be effective in two thousand and thirteen, you added the cost together for hauling, uh, MSW disposal, and the single sort recycling disposal cost. And then you wrap that into the uh, trash metering bags. It produced a net cost needed of ten dollars per sleeve in order to administer the program. Uh, that stayed in effect uh, up until two thousand and nineteen, at which time uh, the, the current, that favorable trash metering contract was lost. Uh, so we were notified in two thousand and eighteen that that contract was going to end. Uh, and that was in a response to significant changes in the recyclable market. So worldwide, there was an absolute collapse of uh, the receipt of recycling predominantly driven by China. China said it would no longer take many of the US's uh, waste stream as, as far as recyclables were concerned. They clamped down uh, very stringently on contamination within the loads. Uh, and that ultimately collapsed the recycling markets. So the only option at that point in time, staying with EcoMaine, is the city was offered a contract uh, for which it negotiated a two-year contract at sixty-five dollars per ton for the recyclables. Uh, contamination penalties apply. So for any load that's greater than a five percent contamination in there, the city pays a penalty on, on that. Uh, and then there's what they call a fifty percent share back. So at the end of the year, they calculate the net revenue uh, that was produced on that recycling stream. And if there was a net revenue produced off in that, in other words, a profit on the uh, per ton cost for the processing and disposal, then the city would share fifty percent of that net revenue. But during that two-year contract, there were no net revenues to share back. Therefore, the city paid a net cost of sixty-five dollars per ton to tip the recyclables. So in that year, when that contract uh, came into effect in two thousand uh, nineteen, the city did the analysis and had to change the per, per sleeve price from ten dollars per sleeve that it had been for the prior six years to thirteen dollars and fifty cents per sleeve. Uh, and again, that was the first increase in six years. You took the six-year increase on that. It was roughly five point eight percent per year, year over year. That brings us to the current year. Um, and again, that, that two-year contract was kept explicitly because we were, we knew at that point in time, or we were told by the markets, that keep your contracts short-term because there was, there was to be a future favorable response in the recycling markets uh, based upon the future pricing of uh, cardboard waste and uh, mixed paper waste. So in this uh, current year, we needed to negotiate another contract with EcoMaine. Uh, the city looked at co- options to go through EcoMaine as well as Casella. Casella being the hauler, Casella also having a transfer station and processing for single so- sort recycling. Uh, the option that was selected by the City Council via that competitive process was to stay with EcoMaine. The new five-year contract has a base rate of ninety-five dollars per ton. Same contamination penalties as before still apply. Anything over the five percent, there's a contamination rate that's applied to the loads. Uh, this, I have to give compliments to the city's design process in partnership with Casella and the waste hauling. Uh, it's dependent upon the uh, visual observations of the attendant that's tipping the recyclables into the trucks at the curbside. If contamination is noted, uh, it is not tipped, it is tagged with notification, uh, and thus keeping our penalties to an absolute minimum. There is now an eighty percent share back on the recycling. And due to the favorable uh, anticipated response, responses within the market, uh, the EcoMaine is projecting a twenty-five to thirty-five dollar per ton net revenue share back at the end of this next year. The city utilized the lower end of that, the twenty-five dollars, as part of the analysis. Using the twenty-five dollars with an eighty percent share back, it gets our net, net disposal fee uh, to seventy-five dollars per ton. So that's a ten dollar per ton increase as part of the uh, company n- analysis. You would have anticipated that actually produced a net increase, but because of the change in the amount of recyclables uh, that were tipping, uh, and, and due to the position, it actually produces an eight thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollar net savings. Uh, so that was brought into the program. So again, hauling year over year is a thirty-five thousand dollar increase. Municipal solid waste disposal, four thousand one hundred and sixty dollar increase. Net anticipated recycling cost actually was reduced by eight thousand eight hundred eighty-seven. So there's a net total expense increase for all of those elements combined of thirty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-three cents. So going back to the Paged-You-Throw Trash Metering Bag Sales and the changes, accounting for the changes in the MSW recycling and hauling, uh, the sleeve price uh, is recommended to be adjusted from the current thirteen dollars and fifty cents to fourteen dollars and fifty cents per sleeve, uh, accounting to take into account for the net increase of thirty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars. This is viewed as being a two-year increase based upon the analysis. Uh, you can see that currently, on the, the present scenario, uh, there is a net to taxation of three hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. With a sleeve adjustment, accounting for all of the, the changes in all of the contracts has, has been disclosed. Um, will produce a revenue of one million fifteen thousand and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents, a net to taxation of two hundred and sixty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty. Thus, a reduced net taxation of forty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars, four hundred and forty-seven dollars. When you look at the second year of all of these contracts and the implementation, you'll have another increase of four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars on MSW. A hauling contract will go up by forty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-seven. Uh, assuming the same uh, net as far as cost for recycling, there would be no change there. Uh, so you have an increase of forty-five thousand six hundred and forty-seven. You can relate that back to the prior year reduction, and you can see that the fourteen dollars and fifty cents per sleeve should equate to a two-year uh, inc- uh, a two-year adjustment pursuant to the city's ordinance. The next piece of this, of the public hearing is, is uh, slated for this evening is an ordinance change under uh, City Chapter one twenty fees. Article six, solid waste, is calling out for adjustments to the per-bag cost that equates to uh, fourteen dollars and fifty cents per sleeve for both the eight gallon, the fifteen gallon, and the thirty gallon sleeve price. The only other adjustments, the committee also went through the transfer station fee schedule and made no recommended changes as far as the pricing schedule is concerned under that um, section. But it did provide clarification that had not made it in, in there as far as inert debris. It'll be defined as asphalt, brick, and concrete without reinforcement or asbestos, because there had been confusion on that. And the, the latter uh, clarification uh, goes to the recyclables. Uh, there's further clarification in there that the recyclables up to ten cubic yards per year is for residents only because there had been an issue with regional businesses uh, collecting uh, recyclables such as uh, cardboard and other products regionally and bringing that in to the transfer station outside of the city's normal scope of operation, or the transfer station to serve its residents. But that is the explanation of, of why the sleeve price is being recommended as it is, going from thirteen dollars and fifty cents to fourteen dollars and fifty cents per sleeve. Uh, and the uh, requisite adjustment as it relates to the sleeve price, what price for the Paged-You-Throw Bags. Thank you.
Think I see Counselor Stackwell's hand up?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, to point out um, that the, the real kind of, kind of wildcard uh, in all this is the profit sharing. And um, while we, we, we did uh, figure things with the uh, with the uh, lower, lower or the low end uh, of that amount. Um, and that is where, I mean, we, we had a discussion fairly lengthy about how long could we, could we hold this price increase on the bags? We felt comfortable, as the city manager said, and, and uh, saying but not guaranteeing, two years. We think this will cover two years because the wildcard in there is uh, the amount of profit sharing uh, we receive in return. If it, if it's on the, the higher end, uh, then, then, you know, we'll be good. Uh, and uh, so, uh, in which case, I'm gonna go out on a limb here a little bit and, and say it might be more than two years, uh, if things uh, go that well. But uh, we don't want to guarantee anything. We weren't comfortable guaranteeing anything because of that um, possibility, uh, the profit share, the fluctuation in the profit sharing. So we hope we'll be good. Uh, make sure you recycle, make sure you get your uh, cardboard and stuff like that um, uh, in, in your recyclables. Uh, and that's, that's gonna help the uh, the city uh, earn some of this money back and keep the, the prices low.
And this is on here because the Solid Waste Committee recommends?
Yes, yeah, this, the, this, this has been um, really our, our prime business here since uh, I don't know if it was before the first of the year or the fir- or the first of the year, we've been uh, meeting on this uh, and, and looking at uh, different contracts and proposals and the, the best scenario. Um, you know, it appears that the recyclable market is beginning to turn around. And uh, so we're, we're hopeful that uh, that will continue. Uh, and um, what will, you know, in, in which case, the, the, the prices of the, of the bags once again will stay lower for a longer period of time. Uh, but um, you know, it's, it's still somewhat of a crazy world out there uh, with regards to uh, to recyclables. And um, uh, rather than coming in and saying we're gonna raise it so many dollars this year and so many dollars again next year, and so on and so forth, uh, we tried to come up with a multi-year uh, proposal, and we hope it will work.
Thank you, Counselor Stackwell. I see Counselor Lanigan has his hand up.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Um, Steve, is it at any point where we'll be looking at revenues that the city generates to offset some of the trash co- costs versus um, you know, hitting up the taxpayers? Um, I, I, I know what we talked about, the, the uh, equity of it is uh, the people that are using it and the metering it, and it's to control kind of what goes in the solid waste versus. Um, I think we've accomplished that even at whatever price the bag is. I'm just wondering, a forty thousand dollar price tag, last few years, it seems like our revenues have uh, exceeded our expenditures at the end of the year, and we've actually been able to adjust the mill rate. Um, is, is this something that we could actually hold off on with COVID and just a tough year? Is this something that we could actually hold off on with COVID and just a tough year for a lot of people? Ten bucks is ten bucks, five bucks is five bucks right now for a lot of families. And I'm just wondering if we did, you know, what would be the worst-case scenario on impact to the entire tax base if we didn't raise the price this year?
So it equates to twenty cents for the average household. For example, my household puts out one large bag per week. I think that's typical when I drive down my street, I see typically one large trash bag out per week. It's a twenty cent per week change as the overall cost of the program.
What is the cost to the, what if we put that forty thousand out into our tax base? Because, I mean, we have grown revenues year over year and it seems like whenever there's an increase in trash, we're going after the taxpayers directly for it.
So right now, if you look at the revenue stream that's produced on the pay-as-you-throw, it still does not fully cover the total cost of the program because it's still two hundred and sixty-five thousand that's being assessed out there to the tax base. In order to negate that two hundred and sixty-five thousand, you have to bring the sleeve price up to eighteen dollars per sleeve, which is still lower than our neighbor. Our neighbor in Kennybunk is twenty-two dollars a sleeve, I believe. Is that correct, Matt?
That's correct. Also, I'm working on generating our annual report and I would note, in last year's annual report, the overall division statistics, the fees including the pay-as-you-throw program cost for the MSW recycling, transportation, and disposal was just under one point two million. The revenue generated from the pay-as-you-throw program was seven hundred and thirty-three thousand. So there is no, there's no revenue greater than the cost. In fact, we do not intentionally, we intentionally do not generate more revenue than the cost of disposal.
Correct. I understand that. Everything goes up. But what I'm saying is every time that there is an increase on the city end, we're not, our bottom line isn't changing, the taxpayers' bottom line is changing. And so, and Steve, for the comparison, I was asking not what maybe you would spend on your trash bags. I'm saying if we spread forty thousand across our entire tax base this year in a mill rate format, like what would that impact be? Would that be twenty cents for the entire year for everybody in Sanford or versus twenty cents a week for the people that service?
Well, I'd have to spend some time in running out numbers on that. I mean, I can, I could calculate for you what forty thousand dollars means as far as the mill rate is concerned, but that negates many numbers of years of developing an equitable program on a fee, user fee base. So the businesses are there, they pay for the collection and disposal of the waste that the businesses generate. Residential people are doing much the same through the trash metering program. They're paying for the collection, processing, and disposal of their MSW, keeping that off the burden of the business base as the burdens are keeping it off the burden of the residential base. So that's been the years of designing a well-implemented trash metering program. The city didn't have that program at one point in time. They put it in for a year and a half and lost the program. And then, what, I think five years after that, brought the program back. So Sanford is really the case study that's utilized by a lot, all across New England. You had it, you knew what your numbers were, you had it for a short period of time, you saw what the very positive response as far as your recycling program and everything is concerned, the savings it produced to the city, you lost it by a referendum vote. And by referendum vote, it was brought back again and you can see the program delivery that's taken place since that period of time. So I would not suggest to go back to taking this out of total taxation. You'd need to raise about three-quarters of a mill. That's what people need to look at. If there was seventy-five cents per thousand dollars of valuation more on your taxes tomorrow, what would that cost your home versus what you're paying for the trash metering bags?
Okay, wait a minute, Councilor Lanigan, Councilor Lanigan, wait a minute because I have other hands up. We will have, we will be able to discuss this later on in the agenda because it's on for first reading. This is the public hearing, so I appreciate that, but I really would like to give everybody a chance who's got their hand up. So let's, let me, I saw Councilor Martel and then I saw, so let's go with Councilor Martel first. I saw hands go up and down, so I'm going to check with those people after Councilor Martel talks.
Thank you. Councilor Stackpole, can you speak to the bidding process? I've heard a few concerns from constituents that maybe we weren't looking at all the different companies out there that provided this service. Is that something you can speak to a little, just briefly?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the city manager can speak to this much better than I can because he's a lot closer with working with these companies. So I think I'll defer to him in terms of how this was put together and, again, he's presented us with plenty of detailed information, so go ahead, Steve.
Right, so, well, rather than try to reference it in here, I've got a lot of the history. Let me go back to the hauling, the hauling contract first. There's a lot of history in the documentation they'd offered here on the hauling program. So the city was previously with Blow Brothers and then it became Pine Tree and then it was purchased by Casella. So the city has a long-time working relationship with the derivation of that company currently owned by Casella. They've done multi-year extensions over the years of time before I arrived here and we've continued to do that. Some of the options that we had prior to this as far as hauling have now gone away within the region, so there's a bit of a monopolistic type of aspect as far as Casella is concerned, as far as the hauling aspect, but the city has made a favorable negotiation on the long-term hauling contract with them. This is predicated on the success of keeping our contamination down. So they use an operator in the truck and they use an operator on the back that's handpicking this. Other communities that have already gone to the automated container systems that have a substantially higher contamination rate than the city does, they're actually putting Public Works employees out ahead of the automated collection system in order to look for contamination in the recyclable load. So we still believe the city has a well-designed working relationship with Accella as far as the collection process. That's the negotiation. They gave us a two-year, three-year, and a five-year option, the five-year being the least expensive. And that five-year option links up with and ties to the end of the solid waste, the MSW contract that is also with Casella. History on the MSW, again, as I had indicated, when I first arrived here, Mark had been, was bought out. Then Casella bought Mark out and closed the plant. The favorable negotiations with the town of Bitterford, the city of Bitterford, get that plant out of their downtown. All of our material now goes up to the Westbrook plant. So at that point in time, part of that, when Casella bought out Pine Tree or Blow Brothers that was hauling our waste at that point in time, we, because of that favorable negotiation for MSW, we incurred no increased cost for the additional hauling distance. So they were hauling to Bitterford to dispose of the waste under the hauling contract and now they're hauling all of that to Westbrook. The city did not then, nor does it currently incur additional costs because of that increased distance. So the MSW contract, the fourteen communities had strong legal representation in there. They got actually reduction in the per-ton cost back then in a very favorable one dollar per ton ramp per year. So you can see that produces, you know, four thousand dollar increase per cost year over year. That's a very favorable contract. That contract ends in 2025. So the hauling contract, the MSW contract, and the recycling contract are now all timed for that 2025 juncture such that the city, for the first time in many, many years, will have the options of looking in different avenues as far as the direction that you truck one or all of your waste stream in, facilities that you can dispose of, say Rochester versus Casella and Westbrook, and other options that can be further exercised at that point in time. So all of that was taken into consideration.
Okay, I see.
For example, just quickly, the recycling cost, it's anticipated the net cost at seventy-five dollars per ton for the EcoMaine recycling, processing, and recycling contract, the Casella counterfeit to that was a hundred and twenty-five dollars a ton.
Okay, I see. Councilor Hurley, you had your hand up. Are you going to wait till it's on the agenda item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I think we should get to the public and I can definitely comment during the city council time.
Thank you. Colby Vazina, you've had your hand up and down.
No, I was thinking and then I wasn't thinking. I don't know. I don't really know how this whole thing works or like what's going on here with this contract, but what if we just got rid of like residential collection and just made people bring it to the dump themselves? Wouldn't that just like get rid of the bags and like save a lot of money that way?
I can let the city manager answer that one.
Like, why can't we just have everybody bring it themselves to the dump instead of having a truck go around?
We could have some communities, you know, I just was in a community this week where everybody in the community, it's a very wealthy community, everybody has to contract themselves for their own rubbish removal.
Absolutely. My dad lives in Shapley and we bring our own dump too. We bring it to ourselves, everybody does. You call it a transfer station, but it's a dump. I mean, come on.
All right, Steve, just, you may as well answer that one because I'm sure other people are listening.
Right, so I think there's a very high level of service here in the city that they get well-orchestrated curbside pickup and collection each week for their MSW and the recycling cost. I know over twenty years ago, when I lived up north, the tax base paid for the disposal cost, but you were responsible for your own hauling. I know over twenty years ago, I was paying three dollars a week for that curbside collection from an independent contractor. So I think people need to put that into perspective. If you had to pay for somebody to pick your trash up, or what does it cost you to take your time out of your day and your week, physically drive to the transfer station, dispose of your trash and such under that? I think you also need to look at that million dollars of putting that back into the tax base at seventy-five cents per thousand, what you would pay for additional tax on your property as far as disposal, or what somebody would not pay in certain rental situations per se, and you would be paying your property tax, would be paying for their disposal cost. So thus the equity is the trash metering program.
Diane Connolly?
Yes, Madam Mayor, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I have several things. In the future, can the city please investigate waste management in what they're doing in Rochester? And can we also take a look at Waste Zero and find out if there's another company that we can use? Because since 2013, I've had multiple problems with the bags, so has other people, and it's usually an excuse with a machine or, nope, we've solved that problem, we got a guy from Hefty coming in. Well, we're still having problems. Now we have another one that was found out with another part of the machine. If I have a product that I'm not happy with, I'm going to return it and that's an option that we all have. But, you know, this hasn't been an ongoing problem for, what, seven years now? You know, and I think it's time we start looking at maybe another company that can provide a better product. My last comment is this. Why are we receiving paper throw bags in a plastic wrapper that's not recyclable?
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
I have a feeling, are there any other, anybody else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? And I will mention that it will be on the agenda later, on this agenda later on for the first reading.
Madam Mayor, if I could, I think it's important for the public to know that city council takes this extremely seriously, so I'm going to pull an analysis up here just to show a number as to where I think we can go in the future. We've worked with Councilor Tuttle now to address this situation. On this piece here, this is how we look at the, this is the distribution of the pay-as-you-throw bags. So you have the number of cases that were ordered or purchased throughout the community throughout the year, how many sleeves per case in the bags and everything. It looks at the total number of bags, it looks at the set price that's in there, then it looks at the gross revenue. So there's two, gross revenue, there's two things that come out of that. You have the cost of the bags, right? That's the actual cost to pay for the production of the bag and the distribution of the bag and such. The other thing that's taken out of that is there's almost sixty thousand dollars, there's fifty-nine thousand and seventy-eight dollars of use tax. There is no other situation whereby the municipality, as a political subdivision of the state, is taxed by the state, pays a sales tax back to the state on a product that it utilizes as part of your solid waste disposal mechanism. This is unjust. Councilor Tuttle has a piece of legislation in for us that is going to examine this and if we can get this negated, there's sixty thousand dollars that can either be used to reduce the sleeve price or prevent a sleeve price increase for quite a number of years. So I just want the public to know that the council has looked at this in extensive detail. This isn't something that's just been brought forward without thought. So thank you.
Thank you. I do see Colby's hand up again, but we're going to have to continue on, so.
Wait, just one second, I just got a question. Can you just go through that fifty-nine thousand again? Can you just go through that quickly? What is, what is this? The cycle of money that goes back to the state?
It's use tax.
As I stated, as I stated, that is a use tax. That's the equivalent of the sales tax.
Because you didn't pay sales tax on it, right. Like when you go to New Hampshire and you buy something, that would be taxed in Maine, you're supposed to actually pay the state of Maine. It's use tax.
So that's because we're using their program to take care of the trash?
No.
No, we're not using the state's program.
It's the product, it's the plastic, it's the bags, we're paying the tax on it. I agree with Steve, it's not just ridiculous. Okay, anybody else to speak in favor? Anybody else to speak against? I'll declare the public hearing closed. Consent agenda. Twenty-one dash eight oh dash zero one, order to approve the following license request and authorize the city clerk to sign licenses on behalf of the city council. Are there any objections to any items on the consent agenda? Seeing no objections, consent agenda is approved. Okay, city managers report. I don't know, Steve.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna flash through this just as fast as I possibly can, so.
Excellent.
Okay. Okay, COVID nineteen. I'm going to talk to you about the, I'm going to abbreviate this. I'm going to talk to you about the stats first. You can see that there's approximately twenty-four percent of the state's population has received the first dose, fourteen percent has received second and or final dose, and I've got the age distribution in here. For York County, those numbers look different and this is the reason for bringing these numbers forward. We're at twenty-one point nine percent and eleven point two-six percent second and or final dose. You've got your age distribution in here, as we know, the distribution is slanted towards sixteen above because of the level of eligibility beyond the phase one A. So when we look at that, York County remains two point one-three percent behind the state average for first dose and two point eight-three percent behind for second dose. And I also looked at the comparison for Cumberland County. So York, Cumberland, and Andersgoggin County were the most impacted as far as the number of cases of COVID nineteen and continues to be. Cumberland County is at twenty-seven percent first dose and sixteen point seven-seven, so they're about five point two percent ahead. Had conversations with York County Emergency Management today. EMA Director Art Cleese has had strong communications with Dr. Shaw at the state level in pursuant to the opening now of the Sanford Mega Center and the Vaccination Center in York, Maine. They're going to start pushing more vaccination doses. doses towards York County so that we can catch up on a percentage aspect. Current hospitalizations, eighty-two in the hospital, this is as of yesterday, actually today, twenty-four in an ICU, fifty-eight in a non-ICU, and nine individuals on ventilators. Testing has actually, the PCR positivity, the seven-day average, has actually gone up slightly to one point five five percent that had been down as low as one point four the previous reporting period. The antigen testing is at five point one four percent. Testing volumes still remain relatively high, six hundred and twelve per hundred thousand dollars per hundred thousand individuals. Vaccine allocation for this past week, they still don't know for this pending week, the numbers haven't actually come out to be reported yet, but last week we got eighteen thousand seven hundred doses of Pfizer, thirteen thousand seven hundred of Moderna. We weren't supposed to get any J and J, Johnson and Johnson, but we did receive sixteen hundred. CDC updates are, there are, have twenty-one outbreaks here in York County that were reported out. I've highlighted those Sanford addresses, Sanford High School, Sanford Middle School, Flemish Master Weavers, Atlantic Federal Credit Union, and St. Thomas School in Sanford. So in York County, I believe there were five businesses, all the remainder of those are schools, so unto the standards they utilize as far as twenty-eight days of having no new positive COVID tests anywhere within that unit. Since it's still community spread everywhere in the state of Maine, it's impossible for these schools to come off that list. So it's not indicative that there's huge outbreaks there at this point in time. It's just that they have had three or more individuals that occupy that building, be it a teacher or a student, at some point in time, that qualified them as an outbreak center, and it's virtually impossible to clear that out. DHS offers free transportation to residents. I thought this was a significant piece in here on top of the main care transportation that's already readily available, and now offering that out to any and all Maine residents that have transportation issues. There's a number here of one eight five five six zero eight five one seven two that you can call. You need to call them at least forty-eight hours ahead of time of your vaccination appointment. You'll be left there at the clinic for sixty to nine minutes to finish your, fulfill your process, after which they'll pick you up and return you home. As far as the Sanford Main Health Mega Center, that's at the Marshalls down at the Center for Shopping. The last fourteen days of operation, the center has administered five thousand and eighty doses, in total averaging three hundred and sixty-five per day or forty-five vaccines per hour of operation. Center has administered as many as a hundred and twenty-two vaccinations in an hour, and has therefore shown its ability to administer the one thousand plus doses per day as soon as vaccinations are readily available. Center anticipates being able to break nine hundred doses per day, not until April seventh, which is the date for which they anticipate the number of requisite vaccines be distributed to them. I've put information in here on Governor Mills' plan to protect public health and support Maine's economy. It's called the Moving Maine Forward Plan. I won't get into all the stipulations, but the major stipulations are that as of March twenty-sixth, there's significant changes to the number of what the businesses can do for indoor and outdoors as far as their capacities are concerned, bulk of which is here on March twenty-sixth, they can go to fifty percent starting March twenty-sixth and seventy percent, seventy-five percent starting May twenty-fourth for indoor, seventy-five percent outdoor and a hundred percent outdoor on those two dates. It goes into the further capacities for the businesses. As far as travel policy is concerned, they're opening up, they've opened up, the New England states are currently on the approved list, and starting May first, all states are on the approved list unless the state is specifically taken off on that list. The thing that they're looking at there predominantly is the presence of variants within a given state. If they have a large outbreak of a variant strain within that particular state, they'll be put on the list as far as still needing to quarantine and/or have vaccination proof if you travel from one of those states. The age-based vaccination eligibility, we should all be familiar with that, it's currently at sixty and older. It's anticipated that by April first, the eligibility expands to fifty and older, drops by May first to forty and older. They actually said today that they believe by May first, they could open up because of the availability of vaccines to all levels, not just the forty and older. So that's, that eligibility keeps coming closer and closer and ramping up. I'll also put the link and further information in here to the DECD, Department of Economic and Community Development. They're the keepers of the guidelines that have been updated pursuant to the governor's actions of their Moving Maine Forward Plan over the next three weeks. They've committed to updating all of the areas in there. At the press conference that I was into by Zoom, they talked predominantly about wedding venues, large, the large entertainment venues and such, and especially about parades. So I put in here that the guidance for large outdoor gatherings such as parades, festivals, and fairs is pending. It should be out in the next three weeks because I know the city council wants to discuss what will happen with the Memorial Day Parade, July Fourth Festivals and such under that. So we're eagerly watching and waiting for those amendments to come forward to provide guidance as far as how to treat that moving forward. But notification in here, the Budget Committee is holding a joint public hearing this coming Thursday. There will be, that is a joint public hearing of the city council, Board of Education, Budget Committee, to be held electronically by Zoom to receive comments on the municipal and school budgets as proposed for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Again, it's this Thursday to be held at six PM by Zoom. I've got the link in here that you can click to attend that meeting and/or call in using the ID number as addressed here. The information, all of the information that's been presented to the Budget Committee to date is linked in here, it's on the SanfordMain.org website. Go to the website and click on Government, Boards and Committees, Budget Committee and Documents. It's this link that will take you there, and everything, everything that the Budget Committee has received to date that is under consideration both for both the municipal and the school budgets are all in that one composition. Okay, moving forward to the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one. We know that's the one point nine trillion dollar bill that was passed by Congress and signed by President Biden on March eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, known as the American Rescue Plan Act. Gleaming through, I had to call upon Senator Collins and Senator King's offices to finally give me links to the various places I could find the information. It seems to be quite disjointed at this point in time. But my research produced this, that Maine is to receive a minimum of one, one point six five two billion dollars is coming to the state. Separate from that, York County will receive a distribution of forty million, forty point two seven million. Sanford, City of Sanford is to receive a distribution of two point one two million. And the Sanford schools have an approximation of approximately eight million dollars that's to be received by the schools. As with anything that comes to us from the federal government, there are significant stipulations associated with the municipal distribution. What we know at this point in time is that state and local government receipts could use the funds to cover costs incurred through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Funds will be distributed in two tranches, with fifty percent delivered no later than sixty days from the date of enactment, the remainder delivered no earlier than one year later. States have to distribute the funds to smaller towns within thirty days of receiving the payments from the department. States that miss that deadline would have to pay back any undistributed funds. And a town cannot receive more than seventy-five percent of its budget as of January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty. Other stipulations in there, the funds can be used to respond to COVID nineteen emergency and address its economic effects, including through aid to households, small businesses, nonprofits, and industries such as tourism and hospitality, be used for essential workers' premium pay, used to provide government services affected by revenue reduction resulting from COVID nineteen, make investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. State and local governments cannot use the funds towards pensions or to offset revenue resulting from a tax cut enacted since March third, twenty-twenty-one. And state and local governments could transfer funds to private nonprofits, public benefit corporations involved in passenger or cargo transportation, special purpose units of state or local governments. There are many strings attached. I'm eager to find more information out about this. The Municipal Association hasn't put any guidance out yet as well. I put a link in here as far as the state fact sheet, and then copied that in the backside of the report here. This is the first time I've found something that kind of collates the impacts to Maine in one document. I've included that in here as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Does anybody have any questions of the city manager?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to ask Steve to point out, looking at those restrictions, because this, of course, is gonna come up as it relates to our budget proposals, and here we are going to receive a large sum of money, and how come we're not using that per se to help reduce the tax impact on the community? It's really not meant to be in simple terms. It's really not meant to be used to offset our regular expenses. Is that a fair statement?
Specifically not, not to be allowed to offset taxation, correct?
Okay, so I don't, a broad statement here. This is, we've got two or three weeks here left to finish the budget up. I know you're gonna look at every possible way that these funds can be used to benefit the city, but it is quite likely this is not gonna impact in any way the work that the Budget Committee's doing or the vote that the city council takes on the budget.
I think that, I think that's a fair statement because of the timing of this. As your manager, I will be looking for hopefully being able to utilize this funding to reimburse the municipality for some of the previously federally allocated benefits under the FFCRA for which private sector employers were able to file through tax withholdings to be reimbursed. Municipality was not allowed to be doing that, nor could it. So it can pay itself back there. We have other expenses that we incurred due with COVID that we've applied for FEMA funding for, for which we've gotten no response back on that either. So typically, if you are, if we are able to reimburse ourselves, we've already incurred those costs and absorbed those within this year's budget. It's been a very difficult process to do so, but it would end up, as far as from an accounting practice, it would end up becoming a unanticipated revenue in the subsequent year. That could be used to offset taxation. I believe that we'd be able to make it meet the guidelines such that we would not, we would be in compliance.
And specifically, that's in terms of something we can reimburse ourselves. So it comes essentially as a carryover into next year's budget.
Correct. Then if we can find ways that we can use the funds as allowable to make investments that will produce a net return to the city as well, we could return it to the taxpayer in that respect.
Right.
Right, because there were a number of things on there that were for infrastructure and water. I mean, I saw a few things that I thought could be very helpful, but you're right, it's gonna take a while for us to look at it and research it and figure out exactly how it can work to our advantage.
Right, and really what I'm trying to put to bed very quickly is we're gonna increase the prices of trash bags. Quite likely, why don't we use some of this money to keep trash bags at the same price? And that's just not, it's not in the cards, it's not something we can...
Counselor Lanigan has his hand up. Do you have a question for the city manager?
Yes, I do. I noticed in there it's a premium rate of thirteen dollars an hour. Now, does that, I assume no one that's working for the city in any position that was related to COVID is making that little per hour. Are you allowed to use that as a credit towards their normal salary? Let's say like an Ian or something that put a lot of time into the, you know, getting the, wear the mask and keep your six message out. Are we allowed to put twenty-five, you know, offset his salary possibly by twenty-five thousand? Is that, is that what I'm getting out of what you're saying?
No, so the city has not paid any essential employees a premium pay, so therefore there's nothing that we can reimburse the organization for. We have not paid any premium pay to any employee.
So that's just up and beyond what you would normally pay? Is that how it's to be understood?
So some, some communities, some organizations have put in place a premium pay. I mean, the city of Portland put an ordinance, my understanding, in effect for that. So premium pay for essential workers during this period of time.
Okay, any other questions, city manager? And we will go on. I do not have a report tonight.
Excuse me, Counselor Martell had his hand up.
Oh, I didn't see it. I'm sorry, Counselor.
That's okay, thank you. So I know we have a few vehicles and things like that that are municipal. Was that something we'd be able to use some of these for? Or is that, I know that we'll be looking into it, but I was just curious if that's even on the cards.
That would be something that we would be looking at in the future, so let's just...
I'll, 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 to you, I'll find in any and all avenues to utilize it in the most appropriate manner.
He is probably one of the most thrifty people I know, so...
I'm sure he'll figure it out, so thank you.
Honest and thrifty, I get it.
Next to my wife, Ann Marie, yeah.
So I have no report this evening, and I, Anna, and pretty much everything that was discussed at subcommittee is either on the agenda, is on the agenda this evening, so I have asked for no subcommittee report. So we're gonna go on. No old business, and now we'll go to new business. Twenty-one dash one zero five dash zero one, excuse me, order to accept the resignation of Anita Harris from the Airport Advisory Committee. Do I have a motion?
So move, Madam Mayor.
Motion by Counselor Tuttle. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Martell?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, any discussion?
Well, Madam Mayor, Counselor Tuttle, I'm on the Airport Committee. The individual here just didn't have the amount of time that she had anticipated to be on the Airport Advisory Committee because it's really become a more active committee than what it has been in the past. So we regrettably accepted Anita Harris' resignation, but we thanked her for the time she spent on the committee.
Thank you, Counselor Tuttle. And what we'll do is we'll, and I think, I don't know if Larissa has done it yet, but we'll send a letter, you know, put out a posting out that just says that there are an opening with details about the committee and solicit applications so that we can appoint somebody. But the appointment, appointment subcommittee will be acting on that and bringing back an appointment to the city council. Okay, so we'll have to have a vote. Any more discussion? Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman is absent with notice. Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
Also, yes, that is unanimous of all those present. Okay, okay. Twenty-one dash seven one dash zero one, order to accept a bid from Viking Seaveyes of Lewiston, Maine for the purchase of a regenerative air street sweeper and catch basin vacuum and to utilize up to one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of Maine DEP phosphorus mitigation grant funds as part of a state municipal maintenance agreement. Do I have a motion?
So move, Madam Mayor.
Motion by Counselor Tuttle. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stackpole. I'm gonna turn this discussion over to Matt Hells.
Good evening again. Yes, so we are very fortunate with our hundred and eighty-four miles of roads. Our fleet management team in cooperation with the Maine Department of Environmental Protection and the York County Soil and Water Conservation District have reached a proposed agreement to expend one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars elected from the Maine DEP Phosphorus Mitigation Compensation Fund towards the purchase of a replacement regenerative air street sweeper. The unit will be capable of removing phosphorus-laden particles from the city's streets before they enter waterways and ultimately into our local water bodies. The city developed specifications for such a regenerative air street sweeper with catch basin vacuum and opened bids on December eighteenth, twenty-twenty as follows. Well, there were, let's see, one, two, three, there were... There were six bidders uh, that submitted, and the low bid was that Viking Seavase of Lewiston, Maine, with the uh, R sixty-five M Buick Johnson model in the amount of two hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, again, that hundred and ninety-five thousand would be uh, contributed from Maine DEP and the York County Soil and Water Conservation. Uh, with this comes along a commitment, commitment from the city of Sanford that we will execute a street sweeping program in accordance with uh, our agreement uh, put together, basically protecting the watershed of the uh, Lower Estes Lake uh, from which most of these funds were gathered. Uh, much of this money came from the phosphorus mitigation offset paid by the uh, Sanford High School project. Uh, with that, uh, we also have the ability to, it's, it's a small amount, but it's some additional, I think it's only five or six thousand dollars additionally. But once we reconstruct the roadways around uh, Number One Pond, creating the Nelson Promenade, we'll also add uh, River Street, William Osskermere and Riverside and keep that swept up nice so that uh, phosphorus doesn't enter that water body as well. And uh, we'll be able to uh, expend some of those funds towards this purchase or recoup some of those funds, I guess I should say. Um, so it, it's a pretty, it's a pretty decent deal. Um, they, they do wanna see us uh, maintain the roads and sweep up, the phosphorus removal is something that's not really not well understood by a lot of people. But basically uh, uh, elemental phosphorus is a byproduct of uh, vehicle exhaust. Uh, it gathers on the roadway and adheres itself to particles, whether it's sand or whatever particulate. It adheres to those particulates and then washes uh, down into the streams. And it's a nutrient for microbial algies and, and things that uh, then consume undue amounts of oxygen in the water, making it toxic for other uh, life forms such as fish.
Thank you, Matt. Um, does anybody have any questions of the um, Public Works Director?
Yeah, just, just a.
Counselor Stackpole?
Quick question, Matt. Uh, based, I think, on what you said, you've got about two hundred thousand of the two thirty-three. Uh, where's the other thirty-three going to come from? If I'm understanding your math correctly?
Yeah, it's a hundred and ninety-five thousand uh, through the grant. Uh, the remainder is coming out of our equipment's uh, capital investment per, uh, capital improvement program. And uh, it has been programmed in there according to our budget proposals for the last uh, couple of years and has been updated with city manager recently.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, then we'll proceed with the roll call. Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley, yes. I am also a yes, that is unanimous vote of all those present. Thank you, Matt. I think you're the next one, too. Twenty-one dash eight-six dash zero one. Ordered to accept bids from Freightliner of Westbrook, Maine and HP Fairfield of Skowhegan, Maine for the purchase of a new ten-wheel truck with plow, wing, and sander. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Metamare.
A motion by Counselor Tuttle, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stackpole? Okay, all yours.
Well, thank you again. I guess I'll, I'll start with the uh, the last question first on this one as well. This one is also coming out of the uh, capital improvement program for the equipment of, program for Public Works. Uh, we've called for the replacement of one ten-wheel truck in fiscal year twenty twenty-one and one ten-wheel truck in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, the truck industry continues to be anywhere from ten to twelve months out on, between ordering and delivery of these trucks. So we are also facing several vehicles that are in the process of aging out. Either replacement parts are no longer in production, they're becoming increasingly harder to reliably locate these replacement parts. Therefore, the department advertised and opened bids for a new ten-wheel truck on September sixteenth of twenty twenty. Uh, we accepted that bid uh, at the time, and uh, we utilized the Volkswagen uh, um, settlement funds available through Maine DOT in order to um, significantly off, offset the uh, price of, of that truck. Uh, but as we are facing the loss of another vehicle, this is a city vehicle oh-four forty-four. Uh, we were basically looking at, we've just had a very recent bid with all the specs that we desire, and we want to continue with the program replacement of the city's frontline plow fleet. Uh, in order to receive that complete truck from the beginning of next, for the beginning of the next winter season, we need to order the replacement as soon as possible. Therefore, we reached back out to the previous bid award manufacturer, which is Freightliner of Westbrook and HP Fairfield of Skowhegan to solicit an additional quote with trade-in option on oh-four forty-four. They provided the following proposal, uh, which is a bid price on the truck of a hundred and eleven thousand seventy-eight dollars. That's for a, a late model twenty twenty-two. Uh, the HP Fairfield plow, wing, and sander cost remained the same, and they also offered a trade-in value for the city's vehicle oh-four forty-four of thirty thousand dollars, which in our opinion was uh, very generous. Uh, we have, we continue to uh, you know, utilize and, and keep, we continue to keep these trucks on the road. Uh, but they're getting more and more difficult to maintain. So we recommend accepting the additional bid from Freightliner and HP Fairfield in the interest of expedient delivery of necessary frontline vehicle replacements for this upcoming season. Funding for the, for this has been identified in our uh, equipment CIP as budget approved in prior's budget process as well as recommended in the current year's budget process.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Comments? Okay, then I will proceed with the roll call. Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley, yes. I am also a yes, that is unanimous of all those present. Okay, twenty-one dash eight-five dash zero one. Ordered to approve and authorize the city manager to sign a purchase and sale agreement between the city of Sanford and Flemish Master Weavers, Inc. for five point two-five acres of land at the northeast corner of Costas Lane, Sky Tech Lane. Part of lots three, three A and three B on city of Sanford assessor's map eighteen A Sanford, Maine for the purchase price of thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
That was a motion by Counselor Stackpole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel, Deputy Mayor Hurley. I will turn this over to the airport manager, Allison, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Allison Avia, I'm the airport manager of the Sanford Sea Coast Regional Airport. This, um, this item and then the following item are both very similar and related. Back in two thousand and fifteen, when we did our airport master plan update, one of the exercises that we did was to look at the approximately one thousand one hundred and fifteen acres that the airport has and to determine if any of that land um, could be sold off as surplus property. So we identified several different parcels that could never be developed um, reasonably for any kind of aeronautical use. And this was one of those parcels, and as I said, the, the next item um, is very similar. So as you can see here, um, this is along Gatehouse Road um, near Flemish Master Weavers, and Branch Brook actually runs in between this little triangle of property and the main part of the airport. So that's one of the reasons why it would be very difficult for the airport to ever develop this or to use this property. So it's a very lengthy process to get to this point. We had to do a land release. So as Steve said earlier in the meeting, um, whenever the federal government gives you any kind of money or anything like that, it's never really free, there's all sorts of obligations. So we had to get a federal release from the Federal Aviation Administration to dispose of this land and not use it for aeronautical purposes anymore. And then we also had to get a land release from the Department of Defense because they have what's called a national emergency use provision. If there was ever a time of war, they could come back in um, and repossess the airport basically for that emergency time. So we get released from both of those things. We don't have that release in hand yet. It's been taking a really, really long time. But in recognition of um, us being able to generate this revenue and then also for the businesses being able to obtain the land and move forward with their plans for it, I was able to obtain an intent to release from FAA. So that's, it's basically their written promise that the release is coming and we're just not there yet. So that's part of your, your packet as well. Um, so an appraisal was done for this property. The appraisal, the survey uh, was all on the burden of the purchaser. So for Flemish Master Weavers to take care of that, they did. Um, and then I took care of the land release itself. So that's the kind of thing, um, if we had, for instance, a consulting firm do that, that would probably be somewhere between twenty and forty grand um, to go through and do that exercise. So we saved a substantial amount of money and we're able to work together. So this is another one of those public-private partnerships that um, we're so proud to be able to do here in Sanford. So if anybody has any questions, the purchase price that we're doing is the um, price of the appraisal, that the appraisal came up with.
And this went through property subcommittee. Through with consensus agreement, so is there any questions, the airport manager?
Uh, I have a quick question. So you mentioned.
Counselor Martell?
Thank you, sorry. Um, you mentioned uh, an intent from the FAA. Um, did you get a similar document from the DOD that you mentioned?
FAA and DOD um, both work in concert for that, and it does reference that in that letter, yep.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure that you both were covered. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any hands up, so I will call question and we will call roll. Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
I am also a yes, that is unanimous of all those present. Thank you. The next one. Ah, twenty-one dash nine-one dash zero one. Ordered to approve and authorize the city manager to sign a purchase and sale agreement between the city of Sanford and Rubb, Inc. for point eight-two acres of land at, at, on the westerly side of Old Airport Road, also known as Gatehouse Road. Part of lot R one eighteen A dash sixteen on city of Sanford assessor's map Sanford, Maine for the purchase price of four thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. Is there a motion to?
So moved, Metamare.
Motion by Counselor Tuttle, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hurley. Okay, Allison, you're up.
Okay, whole same backstory for this one. Um, this one is a little bit more complicated just because there is an easement that's associated with this one so that we can keep our right of way to access um, the fishing game um, firing range. So that firing range is actually on airport property, the city owns that. So we wanted to be able to maintain that on, the, the road is called Rubb Lane. So even though they're gonna be purchasing that little piece, um, there's the deed, the deed references the easement, and then the easement has already been drafted up and that's part of your packet as well. So Rubb has been leasing this land for an extended period of time. So it was time, um, that's not technically legal because it's non-aeronautical use. So this will clean up um, all of our compliance issues with that to be able to dispose of the property, and then we'll also gain the revenue again, which was determined through an appraisal.
Any questions?
Uh, this is Mark, Counselor Martell.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor.
So um, can you, can you talk a little bit about that road maintenance? Uh, is Rubb, will Rubb be maintaining that road? Or how, how is that going to be maintained? Because the uh, the police officers also use that area for their range as well.
Nothing would change with the maintenance of the road than, than the way that it is right now. So we would still be responsible as we are now for plowing it, um, patching potholes, you know, things like that.
So who, who is responsible for plow, for uh, patching the potholes?
The city.
Oh, okay.
And we'll, we'll retain um, all of those responsibilities. The road benefits nobody except us to access our own property.
Okay, cuz I, I know that road's not maintained very well. Uh, so, okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, then I will call the rolls. Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley, yes. I'm also a yes, unanimous of all those present. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you, have a great night.
You too. Twenty-one dash seven-nine dash zero one. Ordered to approve a proposed amendment to City Code, Chapter one twenty, Article Six Solid Waste Fees Amending the Price Per Sleeve of Pay As You Throw Bags From Thirteen Fifty Per Sleeve to Fourteen Fifty Per Sleeve Starting July first, twenty twenty-one. This item must be read on two separate occasions, this is the first reading. We don't need a motion to discuss though, do we, Steve? Okay, so. Throwing it open if you wanna talk, if you can raise your hand. Um, Counselor Hurley?
Yes, I saved my comments till now. So um, wait.
Get a little closer, Maura, because I can't really hear you as well.
Can you hear me a little bit better?
Yes.
Okay. So one of the, I, I know everybody hates raising the bag price. I actually is one of, I'm one of those who prefer to raise it less and try to raise it so that we know it's gonna last into the future. But I was listening to some of the comments of my fellow counselors in the earlier discussion, and I just wanna say, trash is subsidized. So there is, um, there are people in this community, and there are businesses in this community, there are multifamilies in this community who don't get trash pickup, um, have to either use a dumpster which they pay for or they have to bring it to themselves to dump using the orange bags. Um, they're, they're subsidizing through their taxation, the pickup everybody else gets. Um, and some of them um, having to get the dumpsters if they, if they're not allowed to do anything else or if it works better for them. I think we need to be very cautious of trying to hold and keep that under property taxes because you're asking them to further subsidize it by not keeping up with costs. I think the bags are the best way to have fairness in, in trash. If you, if you use more trash, you need to buy more bags and you're paying the cost. Um, I think, sadly, I think homeowners should be complaining the least because they get the trash pickup right at the curb. I, I myself bring my trash and my parents' trash to the transfer station every Saturday because we don't get curbside pickup. Uh, and I'm thankful to have the bags, I'm thankful not to have a dumpster which would be, you know, dirty and attract rats. And I, I'm fine with paying for an orange bag. I don't think this is a significant grea, uh, increase on a weekly basis. Um, and I don't think it's fair to put it back onto the backs of businesses and multifamilies and others that don't get the full service. I think we need to keep it, the cost with the people who use the service. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hurley. I see Counselor Tuttle has his hand up. Counselor Tuttle, you're really getting the hang of this Zoom.
Well, I know, I can thank Counselor, you can get, thank Counselor Hanselman for that. She's been a good teacher. But I, I can only agree with Counselor Hurley. I, getting on this committee, I was very, very skeptical of the whole uh, process and program, but I think that with the hard work of uh, our city manager having experience where he'd been before, I think we've come an awful long ways. I know there's still a complaints about the quality of the bags, and I made the parent that if it continues, we need to look for another company to make those bags. But I was willing to go through now and do that. But I, I know that Diane Connolly and others, um, every time I go to the store, people complain about the bags. So I, I, I told the folks when they came to the meeting and unless they improve the quality of the bags, we'll be looking for somebody else. But I think that uh, where we are right now, if you look at how Sanford is doing things, I think we're, if not the best uh, community in state for handling recycling, uh, but one of them. So I, I, I voted for this, and I had hoped that council as a whole would also do the same. Thank you, Metamare.
Counselor Stackpole, I saw your hand up, and then I see Counselor Martell. So first Counselor Stackpole, then Counselor Martell.
And, and just, just a technical note here. Uh, a couple of times, and this has happened to others, uh, I put my hand up using the Zoom tool and it goes back down and I disappear. So there's something wonky, wonky going on with the, with the hands up, uh, hands up thing. Uh, yes, I was in that meeting with Counselor Tuttle, and uh, he was quite assertive with uh, if we continue to have problems. Uh, this is with the Waste Zero uh, company. Uh, I, I went through a lot of that at the previous, previous uh, council meeting in, when I, when I spoke uh, about uh, meeting, meeting notes, that I did the report, uh, spoke about that conversation with Waste Zero. Uh, spoke about that conversation with Waste Zero. We do have assurances from them that they have made improvements, particularly in the seam and in the tie. Uh, and uh, you know, we should see some improvement there. Again, I'll say, you, you know, nobody bats a thousand. Uh, there, there's gonna be production errors, but we also have in place uh a system, customer service system where you contact the DPW. They will replace their bags and also trace back to Waste Zero the run, the production run, uh, so that we can eliminate those bags uh that are, if they're already on the shelf for sale. Uh, and uh, so that they, so they don't get sold. So we're doing the best we can at this point and uh, but uh, again, I, I will confirm that Counselor Tuttle made it very clear that uh if there are significant problems in the future, that we would be looking for another company.
So Counselor Stackpole, are you saying that it's probably better to call Public Works and complain than put it on Facebook?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you.
And there's a couple of reasons for that, and the main reason is because we can track the era.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, because these, these bags do have production numbers on them. And uh, you know, uh, I don't, I don't really want to bother. Matt Hill was speaking to this anyways, but uh he did, uh, there he is. Uh, he did say, you know, he has extra bags down there. So I, I realize it's, we're in the middle of a pandemic. Uh, but you bring your bag to uh DPW, they'll give you another bag, they'll give you another sleeve if uh, uh, I'm assuming the problems with the whole sleeve. But he also wants that production number, and uh he is in close contact, we'll say, with Waste Zero, and they will look at the production and identify the problem. So that, that's the other thing, you know. We can, we can get the bags off the shelves so we don't sell them if there's a production problem, but they can also look at the run because uh, again, most people probably don't know this, but uh, and correct me, Matt, if I'm wrong, but this is what I think I heard. Each municipality has its own bag run down in, I think they're made in Florida, right? Uh, so Sanford has its own bag run, uh, you know, uh, so pick on Kennybunk. Uh, Kennybunk would have its own bag run and so on throughout all their, all their clients. So they can go back specifically and find that run, find the problem, and hopefully fix it. So feedback uh is important uh to help us. Uh, and Matt, you know, you, you put your video on, so if you have something you want to add to that, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. That, you, you put it really well, Counselor Stackpole. Um, you know, to date, in, you know, the last few years, we're really only aware of two bag runs that went wrong. Uh, after our last subcommittee meeting, I added those bag run numbers to our webpage, noting that there's basically a recall on those bags. You know, if you've, you open up a bag of sleeves and it's got that number on it, you can return the entire sleeve to us down at Public Works and we'll replace it. Um, and, and yeah, so, and it says right on the uh, the paper insert in the sleeves, you know, if you have a problem with these, come down to Public Works at one fifty-six School Street, and we will exchange them.
Yeah, so-
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. Uh, so again, uh, you know, I, I think we're as on top of this uh situation as we can. Uh, again, we did look at, you know, how could we spread this out for five years? And really have to go back to that um, uh, the profit sharing piece. We just don't know how that's gonna play out. Uh, if it plays out very well, we're, we're gonna keep the bag prices down for as many years as we can, but we just didn't feel uh with the uncertainty and the profits sharing that we can make. That, you know, we could just say, okay, let's go to hypothetically, you know, fifteen fifty, uh, and we could keep that for five years. We, we just didn't know, so we decided to, you know, go for two years. And uh, but see, see how long we can, we can make that last. Uh, last point uh I, I want to make is, you know, getting ready to trash costs money. Um, I mean, even if uh, you know, I own a place in West Newfield. I go to the West Newfield Transfer Station. Um, I sit in line in my truck. I go Wednesday afternoons and I go either Saturday or Sunday. Uh, do my recyclables, haul it all myself, and that's pretty much uh what happens during, during the summertime. As I'm going out there, though, on Route eleven, I drive by the Shapley Transfer Station, and I, I don't, I've never been in there, so I don't know how long the driveway is. But there's trucks probably, or cars, probably five deep on the side of the road waiting to get into uh the transfer station on, on a weekend, or usually they have some day during the week, an afternoon where you can go to. I, I have to say, I can't imagine, I really can't imagine not having curbside pickup. Uh, and uh, I, I don't know, you'd, you'd have traffic backed up to, you know-
Up School Street.
Yeah, uh, you know, to try, to try to get everything done. It's, I, I just don't think it's possible. But even if you did that and you had no bags, you're still gonna have a cost to get rid of your trash and your recyclables. And they're still gonna have to be paid for some way, and this is the most equitable way for us to, uh, to do that. As Moore said, you use more, you pay more, you use less, you pay less, and it doesn't come out of the tax rate. Okay? Um, or significantly, it comes out of, it comes out of the tax rate. It's equitable. So uh, this, this works. Um, and, and I think it's a good solution for the community.
Counselor Martel?
Uh, so I'd, I'd like to mirror some of the previous comments about the bags. Um, I think I'd like to get a little bit more information around what they're doing for tracking and maybe get like a monthly report or something that we can look at. Uh, that's something for uh maybe the subcommittee meeting.
You mean the quality of the bag?
Yeah, the quality of the bag. Yeah, cuz I, you know, I've personally had bags where they've ripped right open. So I've been buying regular bags, and then I'll put the Sanford bag over it when I, after I've tied it all up because they tear open. So I completely understand people's uh frustration with, with the bag quality. Um, and as far as the price increase, um, yeah, the numbers are the numbers. Unfortunately, you know, trash pickup went up significantly, and this seemed like the best, best way to go. So while I've been not a fan of, of the pay-as-you-throw bags, it's, it just seems like the best approach at this point, until maybe we can do something a little different later on.
So- Thank you. Counselor Lanigan, I know that um you had something that you probably wanted to add under public comment, under the public hearing portion. Did you want to address that issue now?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much. I, I wasn't calling for the not implementing any bag fee. Um, I, I was-
Counselor Lanigan, someone, someone else made that comment. That was, that was not directed towards you at all.
Okay, I just, when, when uh Steve was running the numbers, I was just talking about the, the, the increase this year. That was it. Seeing if, roll the dice, sort of, with this. I understand a, an increase and why we need to do it. I was just seeing if it, if it was possible. So that's all.
Thank you, Counselor Lanigan, and I have a question for the city manager because I'm just trying to understand, do we pay? I pay sales tax when I buy my bags at Shaw's, for example.
No.
No, I don't pay sales tax, and that's why we pay the use tax?
Correct.
Is, and that's through every community that has a pay-as-you-throw bag method?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So we should have plenty of, so what you're, so what you're asking for Representative Tuttle to do is his bill will say that we aren't gonna pay use tax?
Correct.
Because it's-
What I, what I'm also suggesting is that we're, we're down into the, into the level of detail that perhaps some other communities are not. Uh, otherwise, I don't know why they wouldn't be disgruntled that, that we have to pay use tax.
Well, I just thought I'd pay tax on it, so may, I, I mean, I just can't believe it's something. I'm gonna make sure I'm not paying tax on it the next time I buy it. But thank you for that.
No, you're not. You're not paying tax on them.
You're definitely not. I've bought bags in multiple places in town. I sold them at the store. You're definitely not paying sales tax.
Okay.
Because we're not required to put sales tax on it. I do feel bad that stores don't make a little something on it. Um, I know the store that I used to own, they stopped selling them, and I feel bad for the neighborhood that they stopped selling them, but it wasn't a moneymaker and it, it kind of pulls a lot of your assets. You know, you don't, you never recover it, so it's, it's a, it's a loss. You're constantly just maintaining that amount.
Well, if the state is in favor of recycling, this is, this, you know, I mean, honestly, I agree with you, Steve. But just, you need to tell us so that if we need to testify, uh, um, Counselor Tuttle, Counselor Representative Tuttle, keep us in, in, informed, and I appreciate it.
Well, the more of you that would speak that day, the better. Uh, from a research, would he only stay in the nation that does that, Anne Marie?
Interesting. Of course, anything, well, anything.
Actually, if, so if we're gonna end up testifying, we should actually make the point that why should the state be making something out of this? It's a cer, you know, it's something that's, you know, helping to improve a number they want to improve. Door don't make them any money out of it, so why should the state be making money out of it? It's ridiculous.
All right. Well, I'm glad you're all on this. Thank you, Steve. Um, so we have, this is just the first reading, so we will have this back again in two weeks. So if we hear a lot and we have a lot of discussion, we may have more to say. Okay, twenty-one dash one one eight dash zero one. Ordered to award the bid for construction management services to Mainland Development Consultants in the amount of nine percent of project cost. Complete the Midtown Mall CDVG project. Do I have a motion?
No move, Madam Mayor.
Well, motion by Counselor Tuttle. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stackpole. All right, who's gonna, who is in charge of this? Ian?
I am, uh, Mayor. Uh, can you hear me okay? Thank you. Thanks.
You're perfect.
Been here the whole time, yeah. Um, uh, let's see. The CDVG Advisory Committee um reviewed this um, uh, last week. Um, that we, we have a proposal uh from Mainland Construction in the amount of nine percent of project costs. Um, I'll tell you that this is a grant that the uh city received uh from the state of Maine and the federal government of the CDVG program. The award was uh just over three hundred thousand dollars. And um currently, there is approximately two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars available. Um, the funds have been used so far for a complete survey of the block as well as um architectural and engineering, uh permitting, and also um legal fees and preparing title. Um, at nine percent, um, that would put the uh construction management as far as managing this um, this federal requirement project for construction administration, um, construction management and general contracting of a multi-division um project. Um, I did, I'll bring these up as well. Um, here's a, here's a copy of the final budget that was approved. Um, the funds are, are within the, the limit. Um, we have saved a substantial amount on this so far, just keeping the design work um within the city. Um, the, the planning department and, and the, the planning board has done a great job with um helping get this project approved. Um, and as well, um, I, I just, just point out to you some of the, the features or the ideas of the project. Um, it, the, the thrust of the project, the main project is um this pedestrian walkway um going in front of the Partners Bank and across the Partners Bank property um from the church across the street. Um, i- and then connecting to the stairway at, at the, at the middle of the Midtown Mall.
Yes.
Um, you can see some of the, mm-hmm.
Ian, can I just say, and so people, when you look at that building, it looks like the Lower Midtown Mall. I think it's been put in there to imagine another building on Main Street. Am I correct, Ian?
Yeah, that's right. We've, we've spent um a, a fair amount of time visioning for the future. Um, we've, I mean, this is a, just a beautiful rendering here, and it's, it's supposed to give you a sense of, you know, what, what this site might look like um in the future um with, with additional uh buildings on the site and filling some missing teeth um along Main Street. Uh, includes pedestrian scale lighting along the, the walkway here. Um, and you can see some of the area lighting for the parking lot along with some of the uh, um, the trees and vegetation. There'll be a couple benches um along the middle here um as well. Um, and then additionally, this is a, a planting plan. I think that's probably the most important area to focus on about the project is um, you know, where, where additional trees will be going and, and how it's really going to be connecting Main Street to um Gateway Park um through the center of the Midtown Mall. Um, but the item before you is really just um the approval of the bid. Um, and um, we, we only had one bid. Um, it seems a normal price. Um, and um we've reviewed the, as staff, um additionally reviewed it with the CDVG Advisory Committee. Um, and um we're targeting um, and, and we're going to do this um, um, this summer. So um the construction project schedule will take place this summer. Um, and um this bid is gonna get us uh to meet that, um, meet that timeframe. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Um, Counsel Hurley, I'm Deputy Mayor Hurley. So I attended um the meeting, the CDVG meeting along, along with Counsel Hanselman. Counsel Lanigan was unable to attend, but he's been to some of the prior ones with us. So um, this, essentially what you have is part of an overall project. So there's lots that we want to do as we beautify downtown, and there are plans that we've had for years for different pieces of the puzzle. Um, Gateway Park was one of the pieces of the puzzle. This is another piece of the puzzle. It fits within the grant that we received. We think it's an important uh way to, to beautify a portion, and we, we're not able to get to all of it because the funds aren't gonna stretch that far. But it gets that central path, pathway that we always envisioned, leading from Main Street to the stairway and then eventually down to Gateway Park. So it's kind of starting to make those connections we've always wanted to see. So um, you know, I think we have some people who wish there was more that we're able to do or wish we were doing a different section. This is ultimately the way the committee, as it, as it morphs, this is what the committee wanted to see. Uh, down the road, you'll probably see other projects, but we believe that we have a good plan. So as we work through this, you know, we'll do another section later if we can get some more grant uh money or do, you know, do some unique financing for it. But we think this is a great way to start, you know, really start to soften the Midtown Mall and make it more inviting.
Counselor Tuttle, did you have your hand up or was that by accident?
No, I was just watching the birds in the picture. I'm gonna ask what type that, it'll, it'll look like seagulls, Jonathan. So I don't know if that's accurate or not.
Didn't even notice those birds, John.
Can I make that a comment?
Go ahead, Cat, Deputy Mayor.
During the meeting, we did have um Blaine Boudreaux from S, uh, Partners Bank there. Um, and they are, uh, they have been a wonderful partner in this project. They've actually, they're gonna be doing right-of-ways, and they, they've made it easier for us to really plan this out. I think it's gonna be great for them. They are um looking at options to upgrade the walkway um to see if we can do it in uh heavy, heavy-duty paper instead, for which they would contribute some funds. So they're gonna, you know, I'm, I'm sure Ian's gonna work with them to look at what they're thinking of or concepts and get some pricing and see if we can do that upgrade. So it would be great if we can. If not, it would be a stamped concrete of some sort or a tinted concrete, Mr. Housiel? Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Yeah, continuing to like tweak it a little bit, for the, but for the most part, the bases is what you're gonna see there.
Any other questions or comments? Ian? Um, yes, Jonathan. Counselor Martel?
So just to clarify, this is uh coming purely from grant money? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's a hundred percent grant funds. That's right.
Great, okay.
Um, there, yep, there's a match. It's from a private party. Um, the match of uh a hundred and fourteen thousand um includes some architectural work um as well as um roughly a hundred thousand dollars in um construction. It's supposed to be for entrance signs to the Midtown Mall as well as facade work um along um the, the buildings that uh Benjamin Meggs owns.
Okay, thank you.
And of course, we might have further match if the walkways change.
That's right.
Is there anybody else that has anything to add or any questions? I will call the roll. Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley? Uh, yes. And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. Thank you, Ian. All right. Twenty-one dash twenty-three dash zero one. Ordered revisions to the Land Bank Authority Commission authorization. Do I have a motion?
No move, Madam Mayor.
Second. Motion by Counselor Tuttle, second by Deputy Mayor Hurley. Okay, I, go ahead, Ian. You can, you can present this, and if there are any questions, um, I'll be happy to step in and explain.
Sure, um, I don't have the memo um up. Um, um, Steve's welcome to, to tear it back for me. Um, but um, we- Um, but, um, we, um, we've been operating the Land Bank, um, Commission now, uh, for a little bit more than three years. And, um, during that time, um, uh, the mayor, um, the prior mayor, um, had been, uh, chairing that commission, um, and, um, we also had other city councilors, um, present on the commission as well. And, um, with the start of the new, um, city council year, um, uh, we began discussing, um, any, any potential changes, um, to the commission. And, um, we reviewed, um, the order, uh, that establishes the Land Bank, um, over, um, a couple meetings, and to see, you know, what would be best, um, if there were need, needs to make changes to it. And, um, for the most part, it was an opportunity to, um, educate, um, new city councilors, um, and, and the mayor on, on what the purpose and, and how the Land Bank had been functioning, uh, for the last, uh, three years. And then additionally, make, um, some changes, um, to its, um, uh, to the order. So, it, it, it was, it was a new, it was a new commission established three years ago, and of course, that some things would change. And, um, um, all in all, there were, there were only a few changes. I, I think it's important to just read some pieces of it. The commissioner oversees the municipal land bank authority and the safer, fairer housing program, uh, and in addition, uh, monitors and op- the, the operation and budget of the licensing inspection enforcement program, and makes its findings public. And then, in, in this time, we, we added a statement, um, and making its finding statement, uh, public in an annual report to the city council by June thirtieth of every year. We, we made it explicit in the order, however, um, it, we, we have been, uh, making an annual report to the city council, um, over the last three years as well. And then, uh, purchase, acquire, hold, and dispose of real estate through the land bank, uh, make recommendation to the city council regarding dangerous building hearings and other abandoned properties, uh, make recommendation to city council regarding property remediation, and develop and monitor financial programs to incentivize residential development and revitalization, and then finally encourage, uh, private enterprise. So, it's a good opportunity to review, uh, the Land Bank, uh, Commission's purpose, and then, uh, additionally, uh, clarify, um, the, the terms of, uh, the commissioners, and start planning a little bit for the future. Uh, in addition, um, the Land Bank, over the last couple of years, has brought in, uh, the Sanford Housing Authority, which really coincided with the new director for the housing authority. Been, we've been working very closely, um, with each other, uh, for inspections, um, as, um, and, and, and working through complaint issues, um, as well as, um, some, um, some development, so, so future building and construction and sharing of information. And then, most currently, um, there's some cross relationships that are developing between, um, the police department and the housing authority, uh, to address homelessness. So, uh, good additions, uh, to these activities, um, and staying on top of a number of our, the, the vacant buildings and, and addressing those vacant buildings. Um, then additionally, we've been working, uh, very closely as well, uh, and he offers a very good perspective of, um, uh, from our real estate side, so adding our real estate representative, um, uh, John Carmaholos to the list. But I'll, I'll go ahead and read you the, the, the current, um, members of the commission. So, it's, um, the mayor, um, Anne Marie Mastrocchio, counselor Luke Lanigan, uh, counselor, uh, Anne Hanselman, as well as, uh, Nicholas Rue, uh, who works for Garnsey Insurance, uh, Tim Dumont, um, who works for TPD Construction, uh, Joe Sevenine with Seventy, um, um, the, uh, um, Real Estate Development, and Rebecca LaPierre, who works with, uh, Town Square Realty, uh, and also in Real Estate Development. But they've been, uh, the, the four residents have been, uh, just, uh, a great addition. Um, they've provided some really great guidance, and then additionally, um, Luke Lanigan's been on the commission, um, since its inception, and then, um, just the great addition, um, now, as well as the mayor and, uh, Councilor Hanselman. So, I can leave it at that. Um, I think it, it, I think it was a good process to look at this again and, and, and make necessary changes, and I, I hope to do that again at some point in the future.
To Ian. Any counselors have any questions?
Oh, can I also make one more comment? So, um, I'm, I'm doing a presentation, sorry, um, to, um, uh, the main, uh, Real Estate Development Agency, uh, Merida, I think I got that acronym right, um, as well as, uh, Build Main, uh, Tomorrow. Um, we've been, I've been working with, uh, um, uh, Across the State Group on legislation, um, that, that, um, um, that you all know about, um, and, um, we're getting towards the end here of, uh, potentially, um, authorizing a, a state land bank authority. Um, so, really, the state's following the model that Sanford has put in place, and it, um, and it, it's going to help the rest of the state, but it's, uh, really great that Sanford was able to do this and actually start addressing their housing situation.
Thank you, Ian. So, any questions from counselors?
Sorry, I got my hand raised. No, I'm just.
Oh, I didn't see it. You were not, you're not visible at all.
I didn't raise it quick enough.
Did Counselor Martell have his hand up?
I did, but, uh, Council Lanigan can go first, that's fine.
You're a gentleman. You so much. Um, so, I just wanted to say two things, is that, Madam Mayor, a lot of what we're doing in the land bank is thanks to you and your, uh, I think you had a lot to do with the ADK when you were up at the state legislature, so thank you. It's helped us do a lot of, uh, positive things in our city, so I really can't thank you enough for that. And then, the other thing that I, I'm really impressed about, and I, I think you would be too, Madam Mayor, and, and I know Deputy Mayor Hurley he is, is that our relationship with the, um, the Sanford Housing Authority, that was always a big thorn in the city's side, and something that we worked on for years, and I know that it's the addition of, uh, new people, that's a big part of it, but just the relationship has made all the difference in our city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lanigan, Counselor Martell.
So, my questions were just around what the changes were. Um, and I, I believe you added, um, a few people, and then there were some dates added, is that, is that correct, and, and am I missing anything with that list?
I think that's about it. It was really a case of, of wanting to just have the council reaffirm what the, what the housing, what, what the commission land bank authority does, and that, um, I was concerned that, in our order, there were no expiration, um, of the, uh, the terms, and, excuse me, excuse me, and that I wanted to make sure that we could appoint ex officio members as we wanted to. So, um, tha- and that's why we have more people actually attending now, and sometimes that communication can, can, it can, it can, um, stave off some of the issues that can develop when something's happening, when it's been really helpful, for example, to have Diane Gary there, and to have, um, Officer Small there as well. So, as needed, we'll, we will continue to do that. Yes, Deputy Mayor?
I think, and, and what, I'm gonna actually back you, Jonathan, I actually think we should always have a red line copy.
I was just gonna ask for that.
I was disturbed by that, too, and it's always easy to do a red line copy, save it, and then make a fresh copy, so you can see the total without the red line. Um, it's a very easy process on Word, so I would love to make sure that in the future we can see it.
Right, when we added the report back, we put it in there just in case, you know, down the road. I think it's always good to say specifically what you want. Um, and I think that was about it. Wouldn't you say that, Ian?
Red line copy.
It gave us an opportunity to also go through it, and I think that when you had, you had two new members on there, and that that's helpful.
No, that's, I, I'm not disagreeing with any of the changes. Um, I think in the future, uh, as, as, uh, Moore mentioned, um, I was gonna ask for a red line, just, you know, and even if it's just getting up, uploaded and I'd legislate, so we can review it, uh, so we know what those, some of what those changes are, would be helpful.
I think Steve's taking notes.
I think he usually does it that way, so.
Do you have your hand up, or are you just saying yes, Steve?
No, 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 if, if I could, so I'd like to extend strong recognition that, um, the land bank is, is really, um, an exceptional product in that this, this started way back in the budgeting process, when the city was looking at the, um, overburden of the ta- the, the overburden tax, um, tax overburden on the single-family residential home. They looked at the, uh, elements that were impacting, uh, the valuation of the home, the upkeep of the homes, and the disparities that were in, at that point in time, certain types of rental units in the community, the age distribution of those, and the lack of upkeep by certain landlords. Uh, from that came the concept of, the Department of Community Development. We hired, uh, Director Househill, and upon his entering the office, uh, it was the Star Trek command, fix it, right? From that came this concept that is now really a model that's being, uh, tried to be emulated statewide. So, I just wanted to recognize the city of an amount of work that Director Househill has put into this, and complimenting on the outcome, and the, not only that, but the wherewithal for the city council to stay with this effort, and I see it's paying dividends within our community. So, thank you.
He was the right person for the job. Yeah, Anne Marie, uh, Ian was the right person for the job.
Yes, he was. I just also wanna, I wanna say that one of the reasons that, and Counselor Hanselman isn't here to say this, but we, as a council, need to see the positive stuff. Sometimes we'll have a building come before us, and it's a dangerous building, but it, what we asked Ian to do in the future, when they report, is to maybe pick a couple of properties that turned out really well, and that made the neighborhood better, and, and it is achieving what we, why this land bank authority was put into place in the first place. So, um, I'm hoping that that becomes, you know, just a, a, a nice, a, a nice thing for the council to hear, instead of some of the issues that we end up having to deal with sometimes. So, um, I, I am appreciative of what Ian's done, and I, I'm happy to be serving on the, um, the land bank authority. I see, unless there's other things from other counselors, then I'm gonna go to the public, and I see that Diane Conley has her hand up.
Yeah, um, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to ask a clarification, um, question. Um, five-year commitment, uh, was it at three years before, and has it been raised to five years?
It was always five years. I think it was always five years, right, Ian?
It hasn't changed. Uh, the clarification, um, had to do with, um, just, sorry, I'm trying to bring up my, um, my order here to, uh, to remember, um, was, was to make sure that it was staggered properly. So, since we've been operating for five years, um, and we followed what the state law was for setting up a housing authority, we set the expiration dates, uh, and also clarified that the city councilors were appointed, uh, by the mayor.
Okay, my other question is this, is there, um, something within the commission, um, that you circled back and checked some of the properties that you have, um, gone through that we've had problems with in the past, and to recheck on them?
Yes, yes, we, we do, we do go back and check on them.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Anything else? Anyone? Discussion, we have a motion on the table, I will call the roll. Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor, Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan? Hello? Might have been kicked off. I'm looking for his name.
I don't, I don't see his name, and the screen's all just shifted a little bit on my computer, so, you know, like you move the squares around, so he.
Yeah, I don't see his name either, so maybe he'll.
I will keep going if I have to, we'll, I'll give him to register his vote. Okay, Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, that is a five in favor and two non-voting. So, has he come back on?
No.
Steve, can I wait and register his vote after the fact? Uh-oh, I hear something.
Oh, well, you, you only need, uh, four votes, four positive votes to perfect.
I know, that's all right, I just don't wanna exclude him if he's planning to get back on. Okay, so it'll be five in favor and two not voting. Motion passes. Okay, twenty-one dash one-four-two dash zero-one. Ordered to approve an updated disaster mutual aid agreement for York County, and to authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the Sanford City Council.
No move, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
That was a motion by Counselor Tuttle, second by Counselor Stackpole. Who's presenting this, Steve? Is this you?
Yes, I, I will. So, uh, pursuant to the, the summary on this, uh, both Alex Hamerly and Chief Benati have been heavily involved with this. This act, this disaster mutual aid agreement already pre-exist and has already been signed by the city. Uh, our emergency, York County Emergency Management Director Art Kleese has, uh, asked each community, as listed here in York County, to update these and sign, uh, a new copy of the agreement. Many of the agreements are so old and aged, uh, that I believe that they're hard to even come by anymore. And given the level of, uh, disaster relief that's out there impending currently for FEMA reimbursement, especially around the vaci- vaccination elements for which our department has been heavily involved, uh, they're seeking, uh, renewed copies of the signed agreement. So, there's nothing that's changed in the agreement, um, as presented here tonight. It's pursuant to the authority on, under Title Thirty-seven B, Chapter Thirteen, where the governor, uh, derives her authority for the emergency actions, where our city emergency management, uh, ordinance itself is, derives its authority from, uh, and it sets forward the ability for, uh, the, the, our city to participate in the emergency management directives as, uh, facilitated by York County. As you can see, Chief, Chief, uh, Benati has already signed the agreement, have been reviewed, uh, in anticipation for council action later this evening.
Okay, any questions from counselors? Questions from others?
Um, I had a quick question, is this?
Yes, Counselor Martell.
Uh, is this purely for fire, or is this also police, or what other resources would this also include?
No, 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 this is, this is emerg- emergency management operations. So, you have the incident management team, the IM, IMT team, um, uh, that is comprised of a number of our, uh, officers from our fire department, as well as Alex Hamerly, as your emergency management director, and, uh, Director Bill Tower from the dispatch center as being your, um, uh, second-in-command for, for that. Uh, they all worked with, uh, York County to com- comp- comprise the emergency, um, uh, management team, the IMT. And it's the IMT that was, was the mechanism that stood up the vaccination centers for the Phase One A, uh, has representation on there from all across York County, from, from the, uh, main health as well, Dr. Schmidt is on there, uh, the staffing at York County and such. So, this is the mutual aid agreement that provides for our participation in that IMT team. So, we have separate mutual aid agreements for fire, we have a separate county agreement for, um, uh, emergency management to call out for the utilization of fire, and we have the equivalent agreements for police now, for all of York County, that was recently updated and signed by the city council as well. So, this is Director Art Kleese putting his house in order, assuring that he has updated and approved, uh, mutual aid agreements.
And, and Steve, we've, we have essentially been operating under parts of this agreement since the COVID crisis. Yeah, is, that, that's correct. So, I just wanna make the statement that it seems to me, as a counselor, uh, that it's worked very well, and so, uh, no changes to this, I'm, I'm satisfied that, uh, this is certainly to our benefit to move this ahead.
Okay, any other questions before we vote? And I see that Counselor Lanigan is back on. Counselor Lanigan, are you there?
Oh, yes, I'm here, yes.
Okay, only, and I'm only asking this because we're on Zoom, and if we were in a meeting, you would. And if we were in a meeting, you would probably wait to leave. You were sh- you were kicked off so uh by your internet. So I would like to give you an opportunity to register your vote for the last um agenda item about the um accepting the revisions to the land bank authority, if you choose to. Just because the minutes won't reflect, because if you were in the room, you would have had to vote.
Yes, I I appreciate that, Madam Mayor, and I would be an affirmative vote, yes.
Okay, thank you. So maybe Larissa can register that because I just want it to be, I don't want it to look like you just decided not to vote. Okay? Um, so I will.
I appreciate it.
All right, so I'm gonna call the roll for the um, oh, I'm sorry, I see your hand up, Counsel Tuttle.
Yeah, Counsel Lanigan, I wanna make sure that you were kicked off, not kicked off.
No, I I was, I was kicked off. Good old technology.
All right, I'm gonna call the roll. Counsel Martell?
Yes.
Counseler Tuttle?
Yes.
Counsel Stackpole?
Yes, yes.
Counsel Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley? Yes. And I am also a yes, so that is unanimous of all those present. That's it for the business items. Council member comments? I will start with Counsel Martell.
Uh, I don't have anything in particular to talk about, uh, but just thank you for uh working through all of this, we had quite a bit to do tonight. And uh I look forward to wrapping this up, so thank you.
Oh, I thought you were say, gonna say you were looking forward to our next meeting. Sorry, I couldn't resist. Counsel Tuttle? Uh, you're muted, John.
Right, there we go, Emery. Must be getting tired. Just wanted to comment on the good work that uh Cleese has done with the clinic in Sanford and uh over the county uh with the COVID crisis. He's somebody that doesn't really come and wanna be heard, but without people like that, things would never get get done. I know that uh Steve Buck would agree with me.
I do.
Thank you. Counsel Stackpole?
Uh, yeah, uh, quickly, I uh I went to the mega center in Marshalls and got my uh first shot, uh, my jab a week ago Friday. My appointment was one forty-five and I was out of there at two twelve. Uh, I, I couldn't say enough about how well that whole process functioned and what I, what I saw there. It's just uh, just as slick as can be. Uh, you have a special parking area where you can uh go in and park. There's tons of people there to help you with whatever your needs are. People at the door, people show you where to stand in line, people show you where to sit, uh, et cetera, et cetera. Just as smooth and as uh slick as can be. Uh, I end up with a, ended up with a little, little pain in my, in my shoulder where I got the shot. But otherwise, uh, no other issues. So I would encourage uh anyone and everybody who's able to, uh, don't hesitate, go down to that uh mega center. Uh, it's, it's fabulous. And I don't use those terms lightly, but it truly is fabulous, well-run. Uh, and uh the shot is a piece of cake.
Thank you. Counsel Lanigan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just two things tonight. One is uh as the weather's warming up, I just wanna let residents know that there's gonna be more people uh out on bikes and walking and and just to keep our eyes, uh, you know, out of our laps and our phones and keep them up on the road and just watching for the balls and the roads and the kids that come, you know, cruising by on their bikes and stuff. So just uh keeping that at mind. And then also, uh, big milestone for my kiddos, at least, uh, they're both in middle school and they're super excited about next week. Uh, they get to go back uh four days a week. And uh I know it's a lot of work on the school department and the teachers and the administrators. So um, I know you guys are putting a lot out there to get this done, but uh from a dad with two, two kids that uh are just thriving to get back and and even with all the safety protocols and everything, they're just happy to to be back to a little bit of normal. So thank you so much uh to the school department for making that happen. It seems like Sanford's been leading the way in uh that department uh all year, so thank you.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'm gonna jump off what this uh city council Lanigan said and just say, you know, teachers are doing their job, kids are doing their job. It's for the rest of our, us adults to do our job and try to reduce our exposure and potential for disease 'cause then it just spreads to others. So let's keep the kids in school. We all hate it when they're out of school because then they're all over the place. And uh that's what summer is for. Anyway, I wanted to remind everybody that on Thursday night, there is a public hearing for the budget. And it is a um public hearing that includes city council, school committee, and the budget committee. So it'd be great if you could all show up. We start at six o'clock. The first thing on the agenda is the presentation from Steve. And he does a general overview of what the two budgets looks like together, what the potential tax impacts are, et cetera. And then we take, and we take public comment. And after public comment, we continue with our discussions for the public comment that the city council and school committee are asked to be there. If you could all put it on your agenda to be there on Thursday night, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hurley. I just wanna add that we all are experiencing some COVID fatigue. Hence the questions about when are we gonna get back to meeting, when are we gonna do this? This is not the time to let up. Way I look at it, I mean, I've seen what, saw what happened in Europe and they're back on on lockdown because of of ex- of increases in cases. And I I don't wanna be there. I want us to make some steady progress and we're not there yet, we know that. So just wear your masks, follow the rules, and hopefully the the reopening plan will continue as um as planned. But I'm not gonna be surprised if we have some blips along the way. So we all just need to hang in there and keep doing the good work that we're doing. And thank you to the city staff for for what you're doing to keep city government open. And thanks to this, the the school staff that are doing the same thing on the school side. I mean, St. Thomas has been in school, but they're closed this week. So it hap- it can happen to anybody and anywhere. So um just hang in there and thanks to the council for all the good work that you've done. I appreciate it. I think we will look at a future agenda items, if anyone has any. Do I need to go through the list? Counsel Martell?
Uh, no.
Counsel Tuttle?
I'm all set, Madam Mayor.
Counsel Stackpole?
I'm all set, thank you.
Counsel Lanigan?
No, I'm good, thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
All set.
All right, thanks, guys. Good night.
Night.